Ready to go.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Today is November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and this is the meeting of the Northborough Planning Board. Tonight, if people would like to try to connect, use the Zoom link that's on the agenda. If you're watching on YouTube and want to connect for public comment, just go to the agenda on the town website and you can connect through the link there. It's now six twelve, and this is first on our agenda is a continuation to continue the scenic road application for Zero Newton Street, map seven parcel thirty-eight, and three thirty-seven Newton Street, map seven parcel thirty-seven. I actually just have to make an announcement too that we're fully remote, but we are being broadcasted live and it's being taped. So last meeting, we had a discussion about the scenic driveway, and there was back and forth between the attorneys for the applicant and for the abutters. And as a board, we also sent some emails to our town council and received some letters back. Would you like me to summarize Lori a little bit what he said? Or is there anybody for the applicant that has any updates since the last meeting?
No, I had George Critty representing the applicant. I have no updates, you know, for the board. I understand that you were sending it off to town council for their opinion, telling you what they thought.
Right. He actually agreed that the planning board has limited jurisdiction on property rights. You know, like it was discussed last time. So there's a lot of discussion back and forth about the easement. There was also a discussion that per our zoning bylaws, it is required that the applicant access through the frontage. So that is something that could be part of our decision should we allow the scenic road opening for the wall that either the applicant would have to, you know, show the paperwork that he has from twenty years ago that he can't go through his frontage? Or you might have to go back to Concom just to get a new letter saying that they don't want you to go that route to be able to not go through the frontage? According to our bylaws, it does say that you have to access through the frontage, but that's a determination by the building inspector when he when he, when you apply for the building permit. Our town council said that's not up to us. Also, let's see, I'm just looking through the letter.
Did I also understand that we could make it a condition that they have a use for that?
We can make it a condition that they would have to go in front of Concom or have find the paperwork from twenty years ago that said they can't go that way. And there can also be a condition that the applicant shall not alter the stone wall until the building inspector has issued a building permit for lot four B.
Okay.
And also, if once the building inspector does issue the building permit, the abutters have the opportunity to appeal that decision. So that's how it would play out as a private property dispute. But that is beyond the scope of the planning board. Okay, so there's no new information since last month. Does the planning board have any questions? Our job here tonight is to decide whether or not we allow the wall opening for the scenic roadway, but our our view is limited, although we can add those two conditions. Just so it's for both sides to decide. Does anybody else on the planning board have any questions? I hope I wasn't too confusing. Do the applicant have any questions?
Zaid?
You're muted.
The conditions, from my perspective, the conditions make sense. You know, you issued the permit allowing it, but no work until the building inspector signs off on the building permit application. That makes sense. And we'll be able to identify why we believe that we have access there under the original approvals. So it will go to Concom and get that. So no problem, we should be able to deal with that. Give us the permit with the conditions. Those conditions seem reasonable. If we still have a dispute with a neighbor over a property, we can resolve that in the Atlanta Court Superior Court.
Okay. All right. If you have no comments, oh Lori.
I just wanted to share, so I didn't send this decision to the draft conditions to the applicant because I wasn't sure how it was going to go. But I just wanted to call your attention to two additional conditions that I had suggested. One is the stones removed to accommodate construction of a driveway for the single-family home shall be kept on-site and used to repair, rebuild the existing stone wall along the frontage of the property now or formerly owned by Ehab and Irene Gabor. Reference is made to the plan of land dated August third, two thousand and seven. Last revised, June fifteenth, two thousand and seven, prepared by Cornerstone Consulting Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors. Two seventy-eight West Main Street, Northborough, Mass. The height of the reconstructed stone wall shall be at least thirty-six inches. Then a second condition would say the applicant shall complete stone wall reconstruction prior to receipt of an occupancy permit for the dwelling to be located on the property at, right now it's identified as Zero Newton Street, map seven parcel thirty-eight.
I pulled up the draft, but it is a draft. We haven't decided as a board, but just to share it.
And I do have one follow-up question for the applicant. Where are you getting that address? That you have identified as three forty-three Newton Street? Did the assessor's office assign that number? Because I couldn't find any evidence of it.
Yeah, it was assigned by them. That's where I got it from.
Okay.
Is can you provide me with proof of that?
Oh gosh, I have to look for my documentation. That was so long ago.
Okay, because it's not identified in our assessor's records that way. It's identified as Zero Newton Street.
Yeah, maybe they changed it afterward. You know, they kept changing numbers. They even changed my own house number from eighty-five to three fifteen afterward.
Okay.
Is the stone wall the only thing on the scenic road that has replacement criteria? Is there any trees or any other types of?
Not within the limits of the right of way. So right now that area is lawn, and then there's the stone wall.
Okay.
May I make one suggestion? I had already, when I did the other houses, I had already repaired the other stone walls and fixed them. But if I remove the stone wall, I can use it and close part of the wall on lot four in lot four B that's open. So I can still use the same stone, but extend the wall on the portion of the road that's open right now. That's another problem. It'd be better for the road that way.
Can you show where that would be?
Yeah, you know, right now lot four, there's a piece of stuff that was always open, even when I bought it thirty years ago, that didn't have any stone wall. I'll just move it from that section and put it in the other section.
I don't have those pictures right now in front of me, so I I can't picture Lori. You went up there. Do you know what he means by that?
No, I'm trying to pull up the GIS.
So pretty much so you're going to fix the wall near the opening?
Exactly. The existing frontage right now of lot four B is completely open and it's been open for thirty, forty years before I even bought it. So I just moved it and closed part of that opening.
I think that's the area of the wall that was discussed last time is having some opening down on the other side of the Gabor property.
Oh, I see what you're saying. The farther end.
Exactly. Just look right there. That's all for the road. That's all.
They were talking about that last time, having gaps in that area. So you fill in that area.
Yeah.
Okay, so can you folks see the GIS? Okay. So let me make sure I'm on the right side of the street. All right, so this is three thirty-seven right here.
Okay.
My little finger is pointing to where the stone wall would be disturbed. It's immediately adjacent to this driveway right here.
Yeah.
Okay, so is that opening that you're talking about?
Keep moving. You're doing good. By the pole. See the pole? Next to the pole. See all that opening right there?
Okay.
Right there.
Right next to the Gabor's driveway?
Yep, exactly.
And you can extend
To the pole? To the right of the pole?
Yeah, both way. I mean, you know, we'll hit the pole. Be that section right there. Whatever I can get in that section and close part of it right there.
What do the planning board members think?
Makes sense to me. Should we take public comments? Are there any neighbors that want to comment on it? It's tricky because everybody's on the screen, so there's so many people on the screen. I can't tell if anyone has their hand raised.
I actually I would, really quick, Amy. I we don't know if they're using that for anything.
Right.
I would be concerned just moving it there and, you know, potentially making another enemy, if you will. So, you know, I would hope that you would check with them first before you just move it. I know we can't enforce that, but
I see Mr. Gabor is on the Zoom. Is that his house? Yep, we can hear you.
Hi, this is Ehab Gabor, three thirty-seven Newton Street. So I'm guessing you're talking about the stones behind the pole? That's the one you want to use to close the frontage? Is, I don't know if I understand you correctly.
I think he's going to use the stones if he gets approval to open up the wall in the other location. He's going to take those stones and then move them over to the right of the pole and rebuild the wall. Is that what you mean?
And Mr. Ramadan owns that. So that's the frontage of the parcel that it has the wetlands? So that's the frontage of the parcel that he's trying to build on?
Yeah.
So it's his property?
If, if the Conservation Commission were to allow him to put the driveway on that frontage, then that's where the driveway would go. And if he ends up building the driveway to access the buildable portion of that lot through Mr. Gabor's lands, then he would use the stones from that wall and put them along the frontage of his own property. That's my understanding.
Extend the wall from the pole to the, to the wall. You know, there's a, there's a gap, so fill in that.
So that being Mr. Ramadan's property, we wouldn't really have to consider whether or not that's being used by another property owner.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Could I make a comment?
Or just state your name and address?
Yes, this is Jeffrey Insol. My address is three thirty-one Newton Street. At the conclusion of the last meeting, we were talking about the lots that Mr. Ramadan owns behind the property where he's trying to build this new structure. And the board was making mention of the lot dimensions and the kind of un-uniform nature of that and how that wouldn't be allowed per today's standards. And there was a suggestion made for potentially reconfiguring the lots to allow access to this piece of property. I'm really confused on why the board would approve removing a stone wall with so many potential other alternatives to access this property and the pending dispute. I just, I'm really not understanding that. There's a variance needed for not accessing through the frontage. There is other access to the property. I don't understand why the board would approve this rather than deferring the decision until other alternatives are considered and/or a variance is granted for not accessing through the frontage per the town zoning laws.
Or do you want to answer that? Or do you want me to answer it?
Town Council letter.
So the, the scope of what the planning board has jurisdiction over is very limited. So the only thing they have jurisdiction over is whether to remove the stone wall or not remove the stone wall. So the planning board has no jurisdiction over whether he has the right to build a driveway in that easement or not. So the condition that was suggested by town council is the applicant shall not alter the stone wall within the Newton Street right of way until the building inspector has issued a building permit for lot four B or other order or decision of the building inspector approving access via the easement and all appeals concerning the building inspector's determination, if any, have been resolved. So that's the suggested language from town council. So that would allow you folks to go ahead and thrash it out in court. And if Mr. Ramadan does have the ability to access the easement for a driveway, then and only then he'd be able to disturb the stone wall.
Yeah, I guess I'm just more asking from a procedural question. I don't understand procedurally why the board would approve with all of those conditions and knowing that there's pending potential court cases and variances and everything else. It would seem more appropriate to defer that decision until all those other criteria are reached. But I obviously don't understand all of the logistics of town governance. I'm just, I'm just saying I don't understand procedurally why that would be the appropriate step for the board to take.
Conditions say that he can't build it. So it's kind of deferring it through the condition that he can't build it until he gets all the other approvals he needs, which is going to the building inspector and showing that he can access through the frontage. He has to go to Conservation Commission and get a letter that he cannot go through the frontage that he has. And then he cannot open the stone wall if the neighbors decide to appeal him going through the easement. If he goes through that way, he can't remove the stone wall until it all plays out. So our town council told us that it is beyond our scope. But, but we can condition it so it, you know, it doesn't occur until all those checks have been checked off.
Yeah, I guess, I guess from a procedural standpoint, it just seems like a public hearing is the, is the place that we could all agree that those conditions were met.
I think according to our scenic road bylaw, once someone applies for it, we have twenty-one days to, to say, you know, yes or no.
Yeah, it would just, it would just seem with all of the, all of the issues that are pending right now, the answer should be no. And then with all of those conditions being met, the applicant would come back and petition again for it, proving that all other alternatives were considered and other approvals from the Conservation Commission plus the building inspector plus the potential court case were resolved before this board made a decision on something. It just, it seems backwards to me, but again, I'm not the expert.
The way I read it, Lori, is town council says that we can only take into account the factors of preservation of natural resources, historical value, scenic in aesthetic characteristics and public safety. So in the past, if they rebuild the wall, that's preservation of natural resources. And I'm not sure the wall has any historic value. So I think the way town council said it is making the scenic road opening if by voting no, I don't, I'm not sure if that would hold up, that we have to do it with conditions. And then the conditions determine that whether or not he can do it. It still is holding it. Like, I understand. He said it, it seems backwards, but I think we have only twenty-one days, so it's the way that, that we're told we have to do it. Unless the board, you know, will go through those factors that we take into account. But I'm not sure how, you know.
Amy, can I try to?
Sure.
Try to answer? So Mr. Insol, I understand what you're saying, and yes, it does seem backwards, right? I get it. I think, you know, the way we're trying to do this is we're acknowledging that there are issues, that there's, you know, a discussion that needs to be had here, whether it's in court or whether it's out, you know, in mediation or whatever the case might be. But that's unfortunately outside of our jurisdiction. What we are saying is, you know, based on that outcome, you know, we either approve or deny it. But those outcomes have to happen first. And so we're just saying that, you know, all of these procedures have to happen. But I do understand that it's, because what would happen is you would go through all these procedures and then you would come back and have another public meeting where everyone would be up in arms again. You know? So I, I understand. I get that it seems backwards, but that's what we're trying to do here is we are trying to move the process forward, acknowledging that there is some questions here.
I see Stephen Allen with your hand up. Just state your name and address.
Hi there, Stephen Allen. I'm the attorney for the Gabor's, so I don't have a Northborough address. I, a quick comment and then a question. So I think it's, it's our position that Mr. Ramadan doesn't even have the right to submit this application. He does not own three thirty-seven Newton Street, which is the subject of the property, which is the subject of the application. And the planning board's own rules require that the applicant be the owner or have the owner's consent. And obviously, he does not have the owner's consent and he's not the owner. So I guess my, my question is whether or not town council opined on the standing issue because again, we don't believe Mr. Ramadan even has the right to apply for this permit.
He did answer.
Yeah, he did. He did opine on that. And what he said is the board has no authority and should not attempt to make legal determinations of the extent or validity of private property rights. And of course,
Right, that's what he says right here. I'm reading it. Property rights questions can be determined by the planning board.
Yeah, and it says, with respect to the question of whether the applicant is an applicant under the planning board rules and regulations, note that per section one, those rules are limited to the organization and conduct of the board and review of special permits and site plans under the Northborough zoning bylaw, chapter seven of the Northborough Town Code. They do not mention and do not apply to applications for a scenic road permit. So this is, the scenic road bylaw is part of municipal code, but is not part of the zoning bylaws.
Yeah, I understand. I think it was the planning board's rules themselves. I think it was section two stated that the applicant had to be an owner or have owner's authorization to do so.
Right. Town council also wrote here, the applicant is the owner of lot four B per recorded deed and has provided a recorded plan depicting an access easement for the benefit of lot four A. This evidence is sufficient on its face, in my opinion, to demonstrate the applicant's right to use the easement, but challenges are to the validity and scope of the easement such as raised by council for the owners and in a butter, our private property right questions that cannot be determined by the planning board. So in his opinion, he felt that they had enough information to go forward and that it was out of our scope to get in the middle of the decision of the private property rights.
Okay, thank you. I, I read that as, yeah, he, he felt that perhaps there was enough to establish an easement, but not potentially the scope of the easement, which again, I think he deferred to a private property dispute that would have to be worked out elsewhere.
Right. So if we went forward and denied the scenic, then the applicant would sue the town versus try to go through the property, you know, about the easement. First, they'd have to sue, I think, the board. They'd have to take us to court and for the validity of denying it. And our town council didn't feel that, I don't think that we had enough information that we needed to deny it. So then that would cause, you know, unburden onto the town.
Okay, thank you.
But there, there are conditions listed that there are some hoops that they still have to go through to prove. I'm not sure if this is the latest one, but these conditions state that they still can't remove the wall until they go to Concom and they have to go in front of the building inspector and get a permit. And that's when it's decided whether or not he has to go through the frontage. And, yeah. And then I guess the abutters would have to appeal that he does not have right to the easement. But from, we, we did get a long letter from town council and it, a lot of it states that it's out of our hands.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I just want to be clear that the, the Gabor's are the, they own the actual property of which this construction would happen. They're not, they're not a butters. They actually own the property. But I totally understand, you know, what, what town council has said and, you know, you guys kind of have to follow what your town council is directing you to do. you know, you guys kind of have to follow what your town council is directing you to do.
Okay, so as a board.
I mean,
Sure.
Just, just one, one more comment. I, I mean, I think, I think you, you, you said it earlier, right?
Just state your name and address again, sorry, for the minutes.
I'm sorry, it's Jeffrey Insol, three thirty one Newton Street. I was referring back to your comment earlier that the board could look at this and talk about it from an aesthetic point of view, which is one of my first comments the last time. Regardless of how the property is accessed, this will be a radical change to the aesthetics of the street, because the driveway will run immediately parallel to mine. The wall will be open for at least forty or fifty feet between this and where it is open for my driveway. So back to the question of, does the board approve the aesthetics of having that large of a gap in this wall that was deemed part of the scenic road? Which has nothing to do with the conditions or anything else. I think it, the, the board members, the last time talked about, one of the board members talked about the, the look of the wall and, and everything else. So I, I guess I would ask the board to consider the aesthetics of it, which have nothing to do with everything that we've been discussing.
Does anybody know when it was actually deemed a scenic road? Was it before the houses went in or was it after the houses went in?
I would guess before.
I think it's probably around the time that the scenic road bylaw was adopted.
So all those new houses are the ones that were, are part of this stone wall were built after the stone. So stone wall was removed to build these houses, is what I'm getting at.
Correct. They got a scenic road, a, a permit approval in order to create their driveways.
Okay, so this is the same process then, okay.
Does anybody else have any comments, whether board members or members of the public or the applicant?
All right, hearing none.
That was George Curzio again, for the applicant. You had just flashed up on the screen the proposed conditions. I'm just gonna, for the board's consideration, Zaid request that instead of being along lot one, it's lot four. You know, or, you know, extend the stone wall in that area so that, you know, I know it's written up as being in front of lot one or the Gabor property, but just asking, he's asked that request. I know that might have gotten, that was in the past, you know, several, several minutes ago, just want to make sure that it's still in the forefront of the board's thoughts.
Okay. What does the board feel about that change?
The one where we're replacing the stone walls on the other lot?
Yes, he's moving the stones.
Yeah. I mean, that does recreate some of that, that look, so I, I would not be opposed to that.
Okay, and I'm, I'm just reading. Did the Gabor's, their stone wall will look the same as it does now after this is completed? That's what it sounds like. Okay. Are there any other comments? All right. Hearing none. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Bill Pierce.
Hi.
Anthony Zaitin.
Hi.
Millie Milton.
Hi.
Carter Brandon.
Am I, am I voting? Because I was just, just got here. I missed.
Right. Did you hear? Were you listening on the way or no?
No, I was trying to get on and it said it, it wasn't working.
And I, Lori, I would think he wouldn't be able to vote because he just missed all the deliberation.
I agree. I think he should abstain.
Okay, so Carter's gonna abstain and I'm an I to close the public hearing. Any discussion by the board on your feelings on this?
I guess my feeling is that the, the attorney, the council made it pretty clear that we really have limited input into the, the property elements, but as far as the scenic road, you know, I think to my point that all those houses were built with that permission of the driveway being installed. I don't see why this would be any different.
Yeah, I, I agree with Millie. I, I think, you know, the fact that the roads were built or the, the driveways were put in after the scenic road designation was set up. I think if it were the other way around, I would question it, but having it that way around really doesn't give us much of an option.
And I think with building in all the conditions with it, that's, you know, we're just, we're a step in the process, but it does sound like it's beyond our purview.
Right, because of the precedence that was set with all the other scenic roads before us. It scenic roads come in front of us and, and as long as the developer is rebuilding the scenic wall either on that property or a property nearby, all the past ones have gone through. And that's pretty much what the scenic bylaw was for, to keep the aesthetics of the road by either replanting the trees or rebuilding the wall. So it sounds like everybody has the same opinion. And, okay, and we can discuss the motions. So there are also some conditions that were sent out today. If we do approve it, it is with the conditions that I had pulled up. And we all were sent a copy of them. Does anybody, I can bring up the conditions again? Should I share it again?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Just so we're all clear. Hopefully I have the latest one, Lori, I'm not sure.
That, that is the latest one, Amy. The one that you shared previously.
Okay, so the conditions are, and the wall should be at least thirty six inches that they rebuild. And we note that the way our bylaw states is vehicular access to the building on the lot shall be through the frontage. So if CONCOM says that he can't access it that way, it's up to the building inspector. He can decide to allow them to go through the easement. And then it's up to the courts to decide if the easement is valid for access. So Lori, you would have to update for what they said, the way they were going to rebuild the wall over in the other area?
Yep. So what I would do is I would change it. So instead, it says to repair, rebuild the existing stone wall along the frontage of the property now formerly owned by the Gabor's. I would change that to, to rebuild the stone wall along the frontage of zero Newton Street, map seven, parcel thirty eight. Now are formerly owned by the applicant.
Okay. And made a note here, before the building inspector approves a building permit, will the Board of Health review it and make sure that the driveway could go over the septic pipe should the building inspector decide on the, allowing the building permit? Does that have to be noted anywhere in the conditions that the Board of Health reviews it, or is that part of his process?
I think that'd be part of his process. I did reach out to the Director of Health and Human Services, but I didn't hear back.
Okay. I just want to make sure he knows that there's an issue about septic pipes going underneath the driveway. So is, I don't know if there's any way to note it.
Well, wouldn't that come when they actually build the driveway?
Right. Well, if the bill, as long as it goes, as long as Bob checks with the Board of Health, he would hate for them to start building and then run into a problem. But like Lori said, I think the building inspector reaches out to the Board of Health before he issues the building permit.
Okay.
I don't know his process. Maybe we could say, decision of the building inspector approving the access via the easement of health approving, I don't know, the layout of the driveway over the current septic system. Just to make sure the Board of Health knows that, because this isn't, this driveway is going over pipes that are already there. So they wouldn't be looking at it, the septic system just yet.
Yeah.
But we would want them to be notified that there are pipes there that that they need to know about. Is there any way to add that in somewhere, Lori? Just to trigger it?
Yeah, I can wordsmith it and email it to you tomorrow. Approval of the Board of Health regarding driveway over septic system pipe.
Okay, that way I feel like we've, we've done our due diligence to cross all the Ts and the concerns. All right. Does anyone else have any comments from the board?
Nope. No.
All right, hearing none. Do I hear a motion to approve the scenic driveway decision for
Road.
Let me see, I want to see if I have that.
Motion to grant the scenic road application for the benefit of zero Newton Street over three thirty seven Newton Street, subject to conditions A through D, or something to that effect.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the scenic road application for zero Newton Street, map seven, partial, parcel thirty eight and three thirty seven Newton Street, map seven, parcel thirty seven, including the four conditions as stated.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Bill Pierce.
Hi.
Millie Milton.
Hi.
Anthony Zaitin.
Hi.
Carter Brandon. You'll just have to say abstain.
Substain.
And Amy Preskis and I. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, next on the agenda is a public meeting to consider the preliminary plan for Zero Howard Street, map thirty seven, parcel thirteen. It's a four lot subdivision. Is the applicant for Zero Howard Street here?
Good evening, Justin Leclair McCarty Engineering here tonight on behalf of the owner applicant, Steve Corvo, who I believe is also on the call tonight.
Okay.
So if it's all right, can I share my screen?
Sure.
Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So as stated on the agenda, we're here tonight for the preliminary subdivision here located at, just to orient everyone, Howard Street and Green Street. So I know on the agenda it states four lot subdivision. It's technically a three lot subdivision, so the original parcel was A and R'd off into two parcels, one being this parcel down here, which is currently under construction, was approved by Board of Health, Building Department, all that. The second parcel is the four point one seven acre parcel here all the way around, where we're proposing three new single family lots. So the first lot, lot one here, will be filed as an A and R, as it has required frontage along Green Street. The remain two lots, lot two and lot three, will be served by the subdivision roadway. Before we get too much into the details, I'd like to note to the board that the intent of the proposed subdivision roadway is to remain private. So an HOA would be established. It would be under the two lots, lot two and three, and would be used by them. So the lot, the roadway itself is approximately twenty two feet wide. We have a forty foot right of way, and it's about two hundred and thirty feet in length. And then I'm just going to scroll down here. The site would be serviced by septics, domestic water and underground utilities. And the roadway itself would be handled with conventional drainage, so everything would drain down to proposed catch basin and then to an accurate infiltration basin located on the back, which would have a drainage easement tied to the HOA. We did receive comments from the Plan Department, Fire Department, and then maybe an hour before the meeting tonight, we did receive comments from DPW. We've reviewed them all. They're all very straightforward. They're either comments that we can address at the next meeting with updated plans and a response letter. Or it would be comments that could be addressed during the definitive subdivision reviews, such as the stormwater. Going forward, the stormer would be designed to be in accordance with the town of Northborough stormer regulations, as well as Mass D P stormer standards. With that, if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I'd like to keep this just short, so that way you guys can ask me the questions, any comments, and we can just talk through the, the plan.
Thank you. Lori, you had done the review letter, and I know he said he had read it. Do we, are there any main comments standing out that you'd like him?
Oh, probably my biggest comment is because you didn't include the lot dimensions. I wasn't able to demonstrate that the lots were conforming with frontage requirements.
Oops, sorry. I was gonna say comment six.
Well, that, that is also another issue. So if you could do the calculations for the lot shape factor. These seem to be pretty standard size lots, so I'm not concerned about you being able to comply. But you need to put the dimensions on all of the lot lines so that we can verify that they comply. And like I said, you know, the frontage information is important, but all of the lot line dimensions are important.
Yes, so typically as civils, we, we don't stamp plans that have meets, meets and bounds on them. So that's why the meets and bounds weren't shown on the proposed property lines. But we can give the dimensions or have a draft survey plan showing the proposed lots, just so you can see the dimensions in the meets and bounds as well. So that, that's easy enough for us to address.
Can I just be clear on exactly, what is the address of the existing single home? Because I tried to look this up on the GIS and I couldn't really figure out where this is. I, I have a gist of where it's happening. Okay.
Yep. So it hasn't been updated, and that was, I know that was one of the comments Lori had. So we just went off what the town GIS had showed for information right now. But it's between two Valentine Road and then to the right of it is twenty seven Green Street. So I know one of the, our comments was for us to update this to reflect, I believe, seventeen Green Street, not zero Howard Street. But it's right at, so this is Howard Street. This is the fork where Green Street comes this way. And Howard Street continues to the right. It, it's, and right now, as I said, there is one house. And let me go back to the.
So that's what confused me is I didn't see why that one house wasn't shown. It's an existing house, but it wasn't shown on the GIS, correct?
Cause it's currently under construction.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's helpful.
Does anyone else have any questions on the board?
I do not.
I see Lori has a big list and um I did see the, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I, I gotta, I was getting myself off of mute, I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. The um, the stormwater mitigation area that you've got down there, how close is that to the houses to the south?
So.
You don't show any of the buildings there to the south, that it looked like from the the last, from the other, from the GIS that you had brought up, that that, one of those houses is pretty close.
Sorry, I'm just taking notes as we're going through, so we can show. Excuse me, uh the GIS buildings on this plan, just to get an idea of how close they are. But the other thing to keep in mind is this is the preliminary. This is ideally what the stormwater basin would be, if we need to shift it, twist it. The whole idea of the basin is that the water would be directed here. And then anything that would spill out of the spillway would go to a level spreader, so that would be. Imagine a big trench that would fill up with water. Yep. And then just dissipate across.
No, I, I get that. My concern is, is the saturation of the soil in that area. If that could potentially leach into somebody's basement, right through the groundwater. Because now you're sending all the water from that area into that one location. That would be my concern.
Okay.
Right, and, and you're putting it right up against your property line. So if there are any houses that originally didn't have basement problems. Right? I just don't, I just don't want any problems to come up in that area.
No, un- understood, we can definitely, like I said, we could take a look at that, and if we need to shift that basin and pull it away, we can definitely look at doing that to get more of a buffer off the property line there.
Yeah, because then to the, to the west, you have wetlands, right? So that area is already saturated.
Yes, so I know that was another one of Lori's comments is, we will show. I know this is a GIS, so we have, there are wetlands off property, a fair distance away.
Right, but that one's pretty close.
So. We can show these on the, on the plan as well and show the associated buffers to said wetlands.
That's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so there are only two driveways coming off of that. New, that one, the others are actually on Green Street if I understand correctly.
Correct, so.
Okay.
Yep, so there's one here, there's a second one here, and then as part of this lot one, that driveway would be off of Green Street.
Okay, I see that.
Um Lori. I, I wonder if you would consider putting the driveway for that other lot, the A and R lot onto this cul-de-sac, because that way you could minimize disturbance to the stone wall. Instead of having three openings in the stone wall. You just have two.
We can.
From, you know, the whole is under construction and then uh the Bentley Lane.
We can definitely take a look at that and see what are options we can do.
You're talking about lot one, Lori?
Yeah, that.
This one?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Carter, you had your hand up?
Um, I was gonna ask the same question, um, yeah.
Okay, my question would be to um. It was brought up that you were gonna name it Bentley Lane, and the Historical Commission has brought forth a list of recommended names for future streets. Um I was wondering if you had a chance to go through the list, or if they really wanted Bentley Lane.
No, so I didn't see the list come through and I did talk to Mr. Corvo about it. He's, if you want to send the list to us, we're more than happy to take a look at it and see what the Historical Commission has.
Okay. Do you mind sending that Lori to him?
Yep, no problem. I'll send it right now as a matter of fact, so I don't forget.
Carter, you have your hand up?
Yeah, um I know I was looking at the, the rules and regulations and that like you can instead of doing a cul-de-sac, you also could do a, a hammerhead turn and just looking at, this is kind of just two driveways, I was just wondering if that would make more sense than a giant cul-de-sac for two driveways.
So part of the reason we did the cul-de-sac was to make it easier access, not only for the two houses that are being served on this, but also for the fire department. Hammerhead turnarounds can work, but sometimes they take up a little bit more area to actually get the fire truck to make the three-point turn. Where in a cul-de-sac, they can just drive in and drive out.
Okay. Um, the fire deputy, deputy fireperson had some comments. And Josh had comments, but the applicant said that he already reviewed them. I know I read them, does the board want me to share them? Or did you have a chance to read them?
Are you talking about the DPW comments?
Yep.
Actually, I do have that up as well. Um, and if you want, I can run through these real quick, just give you my, my resp- what my response would be to these. Okay, so comment one, each lot in the subdivision shall, shall be assessed of our betterment fee of forty-two hundred. Acknowledged. The proposed CLDI water main must be eight inches. On the plan, we do show it as a six inch right now. That's easy enough to upsize to an eight inch. Location of electric services must be shown for each lot. Water and electric services shall be a minimum five feet apart. I do show. Yeah, I'll zoom in a little bit. So we do have electric coming in. And it does split at the end and run between run around the hydrant, this is your domestic water, this is your underground utilities coming into the house for each one. I'll verify the five feet separation. If it's not, we'll make it five feet, that's easy enough to address. The proposed drainage system, stormwater mitigation area shall be located within an easement granted to the HOA. We do show the easement on the plan, I can modify the note to state easement for HOA. Comet five pertains to the stormart, Mass Stormwater Handbook and Standards, as well as the Town and Northboro Stormwater Bylaw. Essentially, the proposed drainage would have to meet the requirements both of the town and the state standards. Which we would do as part of the definitive submission, we'll make sure water quality treatment, pre-post, all that's met in the drainage analysis would be provided with that. Which is comment number six, so this would all be provided.
Okay, thank you.
Just stating, we're not within groundwater protection district, acknowledged. And the plan must show any wetlands adjacent to the project location, so as I stated earlier, we do have two wetlands there. Off property, but we can bring those in via GIS and show the offset for the buffer zones.
Okay, thanks, I'm Lori.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, uh, Justin, do you think that you are going to create one acre or more of disturbance?
Think we were, I don't have that number right in front of me, but I can definitely check the limit of disturbance that we have.
Okay, and the reason why I say is uh because we have an uh, uh land disturbance and stormwater management permit. That uh the Conservation Commission has jurisdiction over. And so y- you may be triggering that.
Yep, yep, I do remember seeing that on our project we've been involved in in town, so I will double check that to make sure we are, and the other thing to keep in mind is once we see where the buffer zones are relative to our lot, if we can tighten up the development. We would pull in the, the grading as needed. The, the whole intent of doing the shorter whiff of the subdivision roadway, the way that we design this is we're tr- we are trying to minimize how much disturbance we are creating on the project. So if there are spots where we can tighten it up, we'll, we'll definitely look at doing that.
Carter?
Um, this is because this is a development of a parcel that is currently open space in the residential B district. Um, something I would ask, um, would, would you consider redesigning this using the um, open space residential design bylaw that would allow um you to kind of have more compact lots for the houses and also have a, a parcel that would be protected open space?
Let me talk to the owner in regards of, of that. Um, I know he's developed a couple parcels throughout the town and I know he's willing to work with the town, but before I commit one, one way or the other, I'm not saying no, but let me get his opinion as well, and we can definitely at, for the next meeting, have an answer one way or the other for you.
Okay, thank you.
Saying this is a preliminary design, we have two ways to go about this. Um Lori, could you explain that, like?
Um. Not sure if any of the butters are interested in asking questions. I, I know a couple of them visited me in the office.
Okay. Sugar, I see Jack Gold has his hand up. Can you just state your name and address?
Or Jack Gold, six Valentine Road, so I am in a butter, um, and I have some uh serious concerns here uh as it pertains to groundwater. Uh in the past, we've had flooding, we've had runoff. Um, this parcel, including where the new uh house is be- being constructed, was all woodland. And so it helped quite a bit with drainage um in helping to, to keep the runoff from coming down to our property. The, the new home uh that's been mostly constructed now has totally altered the landscape, it's actually raised probably six or eight feet uh with fill. And at the end of the lot has just had a slope at about forty-five degree angle that comes down to our property. Yeah, it's not just mine, it's, it's all three of the houses uh that I can talk about, two, each, one on each side of me. That has had water problems in the past, so my concern is that if all of this goes through uh as the initial house has. And the property has been refilled, all of the trees cut down. Uh, we're going to potentially have a real runoff issue. We've had water in the basement, not in many years because of uh some of the mitigation we took beforehand, but this has totally changed the landscape, so I'm wondering if there's some way we can be assured that the new properties will, I know there's a proposed storm drain here, but how do we make sure that the existing butters homes aren't negatively affected by what this construction is going to be?
So as part of the stormwater design, the way that we look at the site is we look at it in the precondition and we calculate the flow coming off the site. And we look at different points on the site and figure out the different numbers for the storm events. As a DPW letter had referred to. As part of any stormwater design, both stormwater standards and town regulations. You cannot exceed that pre- that pre-number. You either have to meet it. Or in most cases, you are less than that pre-number, so just for an example, for an easy number, let's say coming off the site is ten CFS in a hundred year storm. We can't exceed that number in the proposed design. And typically, we try to be under that number, so let's say we're at eight and a half, or we're at nine, or the soils out here, I believe, are fairly good materials, so with the infiltration, maybe we're at six CFS coming off the property now. In the same spot that ten CFS was in the existing condition. So that's how we're told to design developments like this, where we are required to meet stormwater standards.
Does that include the existing construction? Or is it just for the new, the three, the three new units?
The three new units, so single family single family lots are exempt from the standards. But subdivisions and larger developments are required to meet them.
So I guess the question I have for the planning board is uh was the, for the existing unit, I know it's already been constructed for the most part, but with some um w- w- were we aware of some of the, the potential for, for uh a butters being flooded? Uh with runoff uh on, on wet times and, and, and is this is this going to just compound the problem with the new, the three new units?
Is that something that we can have a technical review done, like we have, um, or would that be the town engineer DPW looking into that? That accu- the accumulation of the three plus the additional one? Is that something that can be looked into?
The additional one already got approval, I don't, is that, was that something that was through us?
Well, we don't review single family homes.
I didn't think so, so it's really not a planning board. That, that single family home never came to us.
Right.
So we do have, um, so Vinnie McNally, of course, is our conservation agent. Uh, and he originally was on top to retire at the end of December. But he notified uh me that he's going to be staying on until July. So I anticipate that he will do the uh stormwater review. Of course, uh for the Conservation Commission under the land disturbance permit. And uh for the uh notice of intent as well, and then he typically provides a review letter to the planning board with uh any of his concerns about the stormwater design, and then we'll also have Josh review it. Uh, so he mostly looks at other aspects of the engineering. So I, I think we'll have good coverage here.
Okay. Alright, thank you, I, I, again, I'm concerned just because we've had flooding in the past. Um, I don't wanna have to uh have us deal with wet basements in the future.
Yeah, yeah, understandable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other butters in the audience that have questions? We have a lot of people on this, but I don't see anyone else with their hand up. If you do have your hand up and I don't see you, just hop on. But I don't see anyone. Okay. Hearing none, um, I think there are two ways we can do this, right Lori? There's, it's up to the applicant.
Yeah, so a kind of a question uh for the applicant. Um, so the, the planning board can render a decision on a preliminary plan, so they can opt to approve it. They can appro- opt to deny it, they can approve it with conditions. Um, or they can, uh, the applicant can just say, hey, you know, we're just gonna go straight to the definitive stage, um, so. Uh, you know, I, I, I guess I, I'm asking uh Justin. Do you want to revise this plan and then come back and have the planning board render a decision? Or are you interested in just uh taking the feedback that you received and going straight to the definitive plan stage?
I think with some of the comments we've had, um, and Lori, you can tell me if this is fair. If we could have a draft preliminary approval ready for the next meeting. We can make the changes, we can submit them, and I think at the next meeting really get uh, okay, the board's okay with us going to the next step. Uh, I don't think we need to drag it on beyond. Uh, I don't think we need to drag it on beyond one more meeting.
Hmm.
Just so the board can and you can see, okay, the lot shape factors met, like some of the bigger items that were in the letters.
Yeah.
Okay, the they're addressed or okay, they are, this is how they're gonna do it in the definitive. And I think that's fair to both sides.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I would like to hear from the planning board about your waiver requests. So um, you had requested a waiver on the width of the right of way and the width of the s- the paved width of the street.
Yep.
So our regulations say fifty foot right of way, twenty-six foot foot wide paved width. Uh, you are showing a twenty-two foot wide paved width. I had suggested because we're only talking about two homes, maybe three, going with a twenty foot paved width. Of course, uh, if we can minimize the amount of impervious surface, then we can minimize the impacts uh to storm water. Um, which would likely help the butters. So I I'd be interested in hearing from the planning board about the widths of uh, the pave, the roadway. Uh, what what would you prefer?
The question is for me would be, is the fire department okay with that width? Right, to be able to get their vehicles in and out safely.
Generally, what they've said in the past is twenty feet. So when we did, we've done common driveways, they've said that they want twenty feet.
And and twenty is standard for the fire protection regulations for access for them.
Okay. The other question I had actually speaking of that is lighting. I didn't see any lighting. Is there any requirement Lori for lighting for the street or for the cul-de-sac?
For a cul-de-sac of this length, I would recommend having a light at the intersection of the roadway with Green Street as well as at the end of the cul-de-sac. I don't think it's necessary to have any additional lighting. I saw on the waiver request letter that they are uh interested in having no lighting. I would not recommend that.
So Lori, actually, I did talk to Mr. Corvo about that one when it came up in your comment letter. And he agreed probably one to two. At the time, he wasn't sure if he wanted to do lighting or not. But then after he looked at the plans again, saw what the site's gonna look like, he agreed that he was thinking at least one, maybe two. So I was gonna say that waiver at this time we would withdraw from requests and we'll look at doing some sort of dark sky compliant light fixture on the road.
And if you're going to have one uh a hydrant, the fire department is gonna want the light at the hydrant.
Okay.
And I I have a question on the right of way. Is that um, that's going around the cul-de-sac area? And up and down both sides of the drive, is that correct?
So the right of, the right of way width is, yeah, he's showing you with his little mouse. So it's um, it's the ownership, so it's the parcel within which you find the paved width of the roadway, sidewalks, street, well, sometimes street trees, um, underground utilities, uh, you know, all that stuff is within the confines of the right of way.
Okay.
So if if we're only talking about a twenty or a twenty-two foot paved width, forty feet should be plenty, in my opinion.
I agree with Bill that we should run it by the deputy fire chief and make sure he's okay with the forty-twenty.
Okay.
He can probably add it to his letter.
Okay, and then um, the other comment, the other waiver request is the sidewalk. So our regulations say that there needs to be a four-foot grass strip with a five-foot sidewalk along both sides of the right of way. I know with Harrington Lane, which was the last subdivision that was completed, they did a sidewalk on one side of the cul-de-sac and that was it. He wants to do no sidewalks at all.
There's no sidewalk on Green Street, correct? It's a pretty narrow area.
I've been on a couple of subdivisions though where we do the one sidewalk. Um, we've never weaved it all of the sidewalks.
So part part of the reasoning for the request was in this case, the subdivision roadway is only serving two houses from it. I know potentially a third depend on how lot one gets reconfigured or I'm with Mr. Corvo wants to go forward with that one. But as Mr. Pierce said, the the sidewalk would be to nowhere as there's no sidewalk to tie into on Green Street. So we just seem it's not necessary for the size of the development. And again, this would reduce the overall developed area. It would reduce the amount of impervious that we would have on site. So that would be beneficial towards the storm art design, because now we're having more pervious.
Does anyone on the board have any comments, opinions? Hearing none. Um, we could think about it, you know, if we're coming back anyways, if someone wants to think about it or drive down a couple of other cul-de-sacs that have been recently developed and see if if you feel it added to the community. I know there was one recently built on East Main Street, well, within the past ten, fifteen years. I think they have a half sidewalk on half the cul-de-sac, but then um East Main Street does have a sidewalk.
There are such thing as pervious sidewalks, right?
Uh, well, if they have porous pavers, um, but that's a, that's super pricey.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, we can come back to that. You don't need that answer right now, right?
I don't need that tonight, but it was just one I wanted to ask.
Sure. Okay, um, well, we meet in December on the second and the sixteenth. Do you have a preference? Do you need um, longer time to check off all the boxes?
I'm just looking at my schedule. I it really not being, Lori, when would you need the material by at the latest?
One week prior.
So you would need it in a week.
Hmm.
So let's let's plan for the second. Lori, I'll reach out to you by Friday morning.
Yeah, in that case, um, I'm gonna need more time because we have a half day on the twenty-sixth. The twenty-seventh Thanksgiving, we're closed on the twenty-eighth. Uh, so I'm gonna really need it. I'm gonna really need it by Friday in order to have time to review and prepare a decision.
Okay, so.
So that would be like this Friday.
So you wanna, I I did forget about the holiday. So in that case, how about December sixteenth? That way neither one of us have to stress about the Thanksgiving holiday and the then there's no worries about getting it in.
Sounds good. Since this isn't a public hearing, we don't have to vote to continue it. So um Lori, you could just add that to the December sixteenth agenda.
Shall do.
Okay, and if nobody else has any more questions, I'll just go down the list, see if anyone has their hands raised before we move to the next agenda item. Seeing no hands, okay. We'll see you on December sixteen. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much and have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Good night. Um, Lori, the next on our agenda is A and R. Is there an applicant here for that or is it something we can bump?
Um, I don't think I have an applicant here. This was a WDA design group. Um, if there's if there's somebody to speak on that one, can you raise your hand?
Seeing none, I'd like to bump it since the ZBA is here. We'll do it after our joint meeting with the ZBA. Okay, so um, next on our agenda is a joint meeting with the zoning board of appeals to discuss potential zoning bylaw amendments for annual town meeting. Um, welcome. I think Paul Tagliafari, are you the chair? Still?
Yep. Hey Amy, how you doing?
Hi, good thanks. So I think you have to probably call your board into um, the meeting.
Uh, sure. Lori, do I need to read this whole uh script thingy?
No, I I think if you could uh just do the shorter version and uh just call uh on the members to verify that there's a forum. It's not a public hearing, so it's not as formal.
Okay, so like in the accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, uh, chapter forty-eight, section nine, North Brazil Appeals, we'll hold a public hearing uh on Tuesday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five uh at seven PM pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty-five and act extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency and signed into law March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation. Uh, members of the ZBA, as I call your name, if you could just affirm that you are here. Um, Suzie?
Here.
Uh, Jack Carney? Uh, John Marr?
Here.
Uh, is Jeff Grabowski here? Uh, I don't believe he is. And then uh.
Oh, Jeff did send me an email saying he wasn't able to make it.
Okay, uh, Ed LeBlanc?
Uh, good evening here.
Yeah, and then Brad. I think Brad is not gonna be able to uh make it uh tonight. I think he had a basketball game.
He's on. He's listed. He may not be listening.
Oh, yeah, I think he said he had a basketball game. He had texted me earlier that he had to go coach and win, obviously. But um, well, thank you, Amy, very much for having us um for this meeting. Um, you know, appreciate you guys taking the time um, to hear our input. And I guess, I guess for just for those, you know, just to kind of, you know, set the stage a little bit. I know there's been some new members on the ZBA and the planning board. I know like historically in the past, like you know, planning board, as you guys are getting ready to sort of, you know, get um, uh zoning amendments ready for uh town meeting of next year. You know, you know, the zoning board usually comes to a a planning board meeting early in the stages while you guys are sort of generating ideas just for feedback. You know, we're both sort of our boards that deal with zoning bylaws, you guys are more of a quasi, you know, legislative, whereas we are sort of a quasi judicial, you know, uh, part of the the town of Northborough. So I think just for the people on the ZBA side, this is, you know, sort of an open forum, um, a little back and forth to kind of get an understanding of what the the planning board is looking to do, what problems are looking to solve um with these with these amendments. Um, and just to kind of, you know, for us to provide impact, you know, where there's no official votes, we do not vote on any sort of planning board amendment, nor will we ever take it as a as a board. Um, but it is literally just us being a sounding board for the planning board in the hopes that, you know, we're we're able to sort of push them, you know, you know, and give them good feedback um, so that they can uh prepare for the town meeting um next year.
Thank you.
Second of work.
Sounds good to me.
So I guess, I guess Amy, oh, sorry. I guess Amy, you uh, we Lori had pr- provided us with a list of all the things that you had been discussing. So I guess we can just start right at the top. If you guys just wanna, you know, whether it's you, you know, you, Amy, or Lori, or Lori just kind of wanna give us the sort of uh, you know, lay the land on what you guys are thinking, and then we can kind of just go from there.
Mm-hmm. Sure. The first one on the list is um, do you wanna go through it, Lori?
It's up to you. I was just gonna ask if you wanted to go through it or whether you wanted me to go through it.
Um, it doesn't matter either way. But I just had a question. This open space residential design right now, that's the first one on the list. We have that on page seven seventy-seven. And um, that's the only one in our bylaw. I know Carter at the last with the preliminary asked him to look into that. But it it it's only for forty acres or more, so the last applicant probably wouldn't comply with the residential open space planning overlay. I just noticed that.
Now, there are two different bylaws. So there's the open space residential design uh which applies to uh two parcels or more. And then there is the overlay. So what uh, we've been talking about is updating the open space residential design by law. So Carter has prepared some preliminary uh changes to the bylaw. And I am doing that as well. And we are sitting down tomorrow afternoon at one thirty to go through them and uh see if we can get on the same page and come forward with a strategy uh for discussion at a future meeting. So I know um I I spent a little bit of time on it today. I'm gonna uh devote some more time tomorrow. I'm probably not gonna be ready for December second, but um uh, I'm thinking that we can definitely have it something to discuss by December sixteenth.
Okay. Carter, do you mind mentioning why you brought it forward? For the boards?
Um, well, initially I I had brought it forward when um when the the Westboro State Hospital property was up for auction, um, and I was kind of noticing that um, there's actually a good amount of opens. I mean, if you, if you're counting all of that Westboro State Hospital property as well as a few other large properties that are um open space in the residential C district. Um, and this open space residential design only applies to residential A and B. Um, so as a the kind of minimum change, I was thinking just to allow allow the same thing in residential C as well. Um, but there were a few parts of it that might not have made as much sense in residential C, like some of the um, the septic requirements. Um, and so I I was kind of looking over it and seeing if, um, yeah, if we want to not only expand the um districts that uh OSRD could be allowed in town, and also if there's any changes that um, might make it more adaptable to different parts of town.
Okay, thank you. And right now, there's no density bonus, right Lori?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, there is, there is a little bit of a density bonus in that in order to accommodate the thirty-five percent open space set aside, um, you need to aggregate the uh the buildable lots uh and smaller lots.
Mm-hmm.
So the the whole point of this type of bylaw is to cluster the houses together. Same number of houses as in a conventional subdivision. But instead of spreading the houses over the totality of the parcel, uh, you would group them together in a smaller cluster so that you can have permanently protected open space that can be utilized for a variety of purposes. It could be just conservation land uh with trails. It could be a recreation area. You might want to have like a um if in a big development, you might wanna have like a clubhouse with a swimming pool. Uh, so that is uh some of the uses that you could have for the open space area.
Lori, is there any uh research or data that may show that this actually increases house values or decreases house values so that you know, people who are considering this have a, you know, that we also have a better understanding of what that does?
Yeah, yeah, I can uh do some researching and get, I know there were a number of studies done when this became first popular in the nineteen nineties and the early two thousands. And uh, what they found is that people often pay more for homes. for homes within an open space community than they would pay in a conventional subdivision because they feel like they're getting an amenity. And the amenity is permanently protected open space.
Okay. Is the open space taxed at the same rate? So like, say, you had ten acres and you had one acre lot. So now you have ten houses on those ten acres. But now you want to condense them and they only fill up two acres and the other eight acres is open space. Would they still be taxed at the housing rate? Are they going to be taxed for the open space rate?
So they're going to be taxed at their value. So the value is in the home, not in the land. So if the uh uh in a typical development, the open space is owned by the Conservation Commission. Sometimes it's owned by a homeowners association, um, but it has a conservation restriction on it. Um, so the value of the open space is minimal. It's kind of like agricultural land.
Yeah.
Um, so there there really is no taxable value for the open space. But so the assessment is on the home itself. And like I said, oftentimes those homes are worth more. So you take the identical home in an open space community. So let's pretend that that home is on a twenty thousand square foot lot, but it abuts ten acres of open space. That home typically is valued for a greater amount of money than if you have the same exact home on a two acre parcel, a budding another parcel with a home on it and another parcel with a home on it.
Okay.
So there should be no loss in value from this configuration. And we're talking about the same number of homes. So if it's ten homes in a conventional subdivision, it's ten homes in a cluster subdivision. Paul?
Paul had his right hand.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I was gonna say just uh two quick things. So I I guess, Lori, to your point about the the same number of homes, like what we're talking about is um, on the the ten acre, was every your example was Amy, like you you're 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 creating more dense housing, right? So it's not just si- ten single family homes on ten acres versus ten single family homes on two acres, right? You're talking about like townhouses, apartments, multifamily, that sort of thing. Like that's that's what the point of this bylaw, right, is is to have the the dense housing there. And then the the other point, just a moot point, having been on open space before and having gone through the value of land aspect, um, if it's, you know, if it's cut off from obviously roadways and stuff like that, that has a huge impact too. And we've done this on uh on a specific property on Rice Ave, where the homeowner wanted to capture his property, which was on two acres, and then he had eighteen acres behind him. And, you know, we had to value the land in order to try to purchase it, and the value came in significantly less than what he thought the value was. Um, and so it it's, you know, I I don't want to say it was like three or four thousand an acre was the value that we got to assess that. Just for point of reference, but.
Yeah, and you know, the the modified uh bylaw hasn't been written yet. So I I can't tell you at this point um what uh uses would be allowed. Uh, some of the uses that I would like to see personally is uh cottage dwellings, uh, single family detached duplexes and single family attached. So I've seen, uh, you know, I I told you folks that I worked for other communities and we had these types of regulations in three of the communities I worked in. Two of them I wrote myself. So I've done a lot of research on this style of development. And um I have seen it work where you allow those configurations. So like I said, it would be density neutral. So let's say and I mentioned this last last time, we had a planning board meeting. Let's say we have a hundred acre parcel and the zoning is uh forty thousand square foot lots. So let's say on that hundred acre parcel, when you take into account roadways and drainage, you can fit eighty homes on it. So that would be your basic maximum number. So eighty homes is what you get. So you could do eighty single family homes, but instead of them being on one acre lots, maybe they're on ten thousand square foot lots. Or you could do um a combination of single family and duplexes. You still get eighty units. If you do the combination of the single family and the duplexes, then chances are you will get a greater amount of permanently protected open space because the duplexes are less land consumptive than a single family home is, obviously. So instead of having eighty structures, now you're talking, if you if you only did duplexes, instead of having eighty structures, now you have forty structures. Um, so maybe instead of uh permanently protecting uh thirty five acres, if you do a thirty five percent open space set aside, instead of doing thirty five acres, because you're doing duplexes, maybe you're able to do fifty acres of permanently protected open space. Um, similarly, if you ended up doing triplexes and duplexes, then that would enable you to cluster even more. So maybe in that scenario, you get sixty acres of permanently protected open space. Um, so the by providing flexibility in the style of housing, you can uh meet a variety of people's needs. So you can provide housing for young professionals, just starting out, who might be interested in a townhouse configuration or a duplex. Uh, you could also be providing for empty nesters as well as families. So um, you could end up having a community that consists of all three types of housing. You know, maybe you have cottages, you have duplexes, and you have triplexes. So this is some of the flexibility that you have. If you're in the residential C district, then a larger amount of the land is sewed and on public water. So it would allow you to get tighter than if you're maybe in the residential A district, which really doesn't have a lot of um public services. And in that case, you would most likely have less dense housing.
Now, the one, I'm just trying to skim through the one we have right now. We only allow um detached single family, right? The one currently doesn't allow for duplexes or triplexes. Is that true?
Correct. That's correct.
Yeah, I yeah, I think to to, I think uh Millie made the point about the the data. Um, you know, Lori, I totally understand your your point about the sort of the hundred eight, hundred acres as an example and how you you know, thi- this could be like beneficial to the town. I think the thing that I'm struggling with, you know, in in sort of going through it, i- i- is it's is its applicability to the R C residential zone, right? So R C um, generally speaking, has, you know, much smaller lots. You think in the Northgate area, you think in sort of the this the southern part of Northborough. Um, I just, I I guess I'm, unless I'm, you know, there's you guys have already done the the study and the data analysis of, you know, we've identified ten fifteen lots that we think that this could be applicable for. Um, you know, I I I think I would like to see some of some of that data would would be helpful, I think, to to as you guys go through this process to say this bylaw could be applicable on ten or fifteen or twenty different lots, and here's what we think it could do to sort of help there, you know? Because I I don't think a hundred acres in Northborough is unless you're talking about, you know, Juniper or something, but.
It's a good point. Um, if anybody else wants to pop in, they can when they, because I can't see everybody. So if you have a comment, oh, sure.
It's Suzie. Um, I had a a couple of things. I I did um to piggyback or repeat what Paul had said. I was wondering if there were um, specific lots in um in people's minds when they were um thinking of this. Um, also, we're, I know that um affordable housing is always on people's minds um in that percentage. And I know that right now we're there, and I'm really shocked that like that open space is the the one thing that everyone's thinking of here, and it hasn't been mentioned at that percentage. Um, because affordable housing is always the percentage that I always hear spoken of first. But here it's open space. So um, I'm wondering and how we're not concerned with that when we're speaking of, oh, we can have all these new little houses in a little spot, and we can keep the big open space. Um, because where would the affordable housing be? Um, also, I, while I was waiting, because no offense, but like I don't need to hear about cases that I'm not ruling on. So while you guys were chatting about whatever you were chatting about with your applicants, I kind of muted you, and I was watching Finance Committee because they were talking about the schools. And right now, they're piecemealing and asking for money for Melican because it's going to be so many years before we can even deal with Melican. And Melican's falling apart. And Carter, I mean, you were just, it hasn't been too long since you've been there, but if you did a tour of Melican right now, nothing's changed. And they're asking for thirty thousand dollars for desks that I bet Brad, who isn't on here, probably sat in when he was at Melican. Um, they're asking for new lighting, which probably hasn't been changed since Brad was there. I'm just gonna use Brad as an example because I know he's a Northborough, um, Northborough, um, Northborough Middle School graduate. Um, it wasn't Melican back then. There, so two hundred thousand dollars for that, fifty thousand dollars to convert a tech classroom to a guidance classroom, um, thirty thousand dollars for desks and chairs, and that's just Melican. Um, it's it's gonna be like, I think, a six to eight year process to build Peaslee. One of these housing projects would go up in less than a year. Um, and our, I know at Proctor, like, all the kindergartens are maxed out across, and this isn't even the COVID baby boom, which I talk about all the time, not even the COVID baby boom, kindergartens are maxed out across Northborough as is the Castle, um, the Castle program at Proctor. And the only reason why these Castle classrooms are gaining um students is because our screening processes are better. Um, and again, you guys can tour the schools anytime. I'll get you an appointment. I know our superintendent Martina will gladly give you a tour of the schools. Um, it takes a long time to build the schools, and they're getting hammered over there on Finance Committee um for money. So I know that if, you know, the more houses, the higher taxes, but it takes a while to build a school. So those are my big concerns about adding um giant housing projects and more people, and that's always going to be my main concern. Um, and right now, we are at the the ten percent threshold for affordable housing. We're very affordable right now, um comparatively, Northborough. Um, and this is the Warren Group twenty um from September twenty twenty four. Northborough Housing is five hundred and twenty four, Westborough seven eighty two, Southborough one point five million. If anyone wants Parks and Rec, we are the Pawnee to their Eagleton. So glad we have a regional high school with them. Um, Hopkinton, one point, um, one million. Bolton, nine fifty five, Berlin, seven sixty, Ashland, six fifty. Um, and single family homes are far better at producing tax revenue. Um, so these are two thousand eighteen to twenty twenty stats. Um, currently eighty percent of Northborough revenue comes from property taxes. So these are like, this is all stuff that I can send all of you. So these are just some of my concerns. Um.
Suzie, I can add. I can address those. Uh, first of all, this uh any development under the open space residential design would be subject to the inclusionary housing bylaw that creates uh ten or more housing units. So that would be fifteen percent of the units would have to be for lower moderate income folks. Um, so this this development would not be exempt from that. And secondly, um subdivisions are by right uses. Uh, so the planning board is obligated to approve subdivisions that adhere to uh, the design requirements specified in the Planning Board subdivision rules and regulations. So the planning board doesn't have the power to just say no because of the school population uh or the state of the schools. So the open space residential design is just a type of subdivision. Or it could be a um it could be a condo. That's something that is currently allowed uh in the existing open space residential design. Um, but it's density neutral. So that means under a conventional subdivision that could be built tomorrow. So somebody could come in and they could propose uh, two hundred lot subdivision on Juniper Hill.
Yep.
And if it adheres to uh, our twenty three year olds subdivision rules and regulations, then the planning board would have to approve it.
But the density portion that you were, that you were talking about with Amy that you were just discussing with Amy that isn't in here yet, and that you were still gonna discuss the density part. Isn't that the part that?
Yeah, yeah, but we were talking about density neutral. So if under conventional subdivision design, two hundred units could be built, then I'm still talking about two hundred units. It's just that two hundred units may be in single family homes. They may be in cottage dwellings. They may be in um duplexes. They may be in triplexes. Um, it's still the same number of units, though. And if you have duplexes and triplexes and cottages, you tend to have fewer children overall than if you have single family homes.
Where where's that stat from?
I, it's just, I I can get it for you.
I I would love to see the, I would love to see where that stat comes from, because I totally disagree with that.
Probably not Northboard duplexes, because like even the ones on Hudson Street, there were three thousand square feet on each side.
Yeah. Yeah, I I gotta, yeah, I totally disagree with that. Absolutely. And I would still love for you to tour our schools.
I just would like to see how it would fit in R C. I'm concerned about opening it to the smaller lots because would you really get that much benefit out of the open space if they're such small lots? But now maybe you're gonna get two you know, to fit, but versus one, I don't know how much of it was. I wonder if the original regulations that we have were put in R A and R B just because you got, they were bigger areas. And so you could conserve more and you'd have open space where the small lots is really not much.
As from what I was working on of my kind of drafting, um, I was thinking about putting in a minimum open space requirement. Um, I don't know exactly the number would make sense, but so currently I think it's thirty five percent um, of the the property has to be the open space. Um, because if it was going to be opened up to smaller lots, I was gonna put it could be one acre, it could be two acres, it could be more than that of as they add a minimum, you have to have that much be the open space, even if that is um more than the thirty five percent that would otherwise be required. But if it's a bigger property, that thirty five percent is more than the one or two acres, then you would have to do the thirty five percent.
Okay.
Sorry, just a a question, but like, that's o- open space on like a single family lot, right? That's only for downtown. downtown, business, business east, right? There's no open space for residential zones currently.
So so under uh this open space residential design, the open space would be held in common. So it's different than what you're looking at in the zoning bylaw under the dimensional chart, where it says that like on a single-family lot in the um residential C district, thirty-five percent needs to be open space. So what that's saying is that thirty-five percent of the total parcel must be grass. But it's still owned by and can only be used by the owner of the property. So what this is saying is that you still have grass around your house. You still have your own property, but then there's also, so instead of having, say, a twenty thousand square foot lot, you may have a ten thousand square foot lot. But then you may have three acres of land that everybody can enjoy. So it might have, you know, um a field on it where you can throw around a football, or it might have um hiking trails on it, or just be, you know, a a meadow that's uh nice to look at or whatever, a community garden. Uh then everybody can use, they can have their own little garden plots on. So that's the difference is in a conventional subdivision, people just have their yards, they put fences around their yards, they use their yards as their property alone. Under the open space residential design, you have open space for everybody to enjoy.
So is it like a homeowners association we're making? Because who's taking care of it? Because there's like in in Northgate, there's like open, you can only see it from on a map. There's like open spaces, but it's all overgrown, and they're almost like gullies and open fields. But they're so overgrown, no one uses them. Um like, we we kind of like discovered them, only seeing them on a map.
It it really does depend. Um and we have this bylaw currently. It just hasn't been used.
Everyone forgot about it.
But the um but the open space, I mean, it's it's dependent upon how the developer wants it and how the Planning Board approves it. It could be conveyed to the Conservation Commission. It could be conveyed to a homeowners association. It could be uh conveyed to a land trust. Uh it all depends on what the point is of the open space. Is it, you know, for recreation, in which case the homeowners association should own it? Maybe they have picnic tables or um, you know, uh walking paths or whatever. And if it's um just for conservation purposes, which has value, certainly for the critters, then uh it may be conveyed to the Conservation Commission. And maybe they want access or they don't want access. You know, that can be discussed during the whole permitting process.
See, um Jacob Jones has his hand up.
Hi, can I talk first, ask a question?
Sure.
Madam and Mr. Chair, sorry, I'm just both of your board's liaison, so I thought I should attend this meeting. I'd have a quick question. So because I read the existing bylaw, and I see that one of the kind of in my words would be incentives for a developer to use the existing bylaw is it does have a possible density bonus if you exceed the thirty-five percent open space requirement for every ten percent of open space that you exceed the thirty-five percent. It mentions that you can have a density bonus. Um at the same time, what I'm hearing is that's not, you're you're trying to keep it density neutral. And if that's true, it seems like you have to not have that density bonus. If I'm following that logic correctly, and excuse me if I'm not, or maybe there's more incentives in there than the density bonus. But um I'd like to understand better, what's the what's the advantage for using this bylaw if there isn't a density bonus? Because from my view, I mean, these are all, and these are great goals. Uh but from my view, any property owner can voluntarily restrict the use of any portion of the property for any of these purposes voluntarily, if that's what they thought was advantageous to do. We don't need a bylaw to tell them they can do that. Um the I I understand the difference of you're saying you can squish the houses into smaller places. At the same time, they could also do that with a variance from the zoning board, um if that was appropriate. Um you know, instead of forty thousand square foot lots, you could have twenty thousand square foot lots if they could make a variance argument. But but so so but but I'm just trying to see what is the incentive to the developer to even go this route? When they could impose upon themselves these restrictions if they wanted to. Um if they're not getting the density bonus, which is what I'm hearing, you're saying it's gonna be density neutral. So those are my questions. Thanks for letting me ask them, and I'll uh lower my hand.
Okay, i- it's a little premature, because of course the modifications haven't been written yet. So this is one of the challenges of having this joint meeting so early, because none of this has been worked out yet. So Carter and I haven't met, we haven't discussed, I haven't really made my suggestions. Carter made some suggestions. What I can tell you is uh the benefit to the developer of going this route versus the conventional subdivision route is shorter infrastructure. So the roads are shorter because the frontage is sh- is smaller. Um the the pipes are s- shorter. Um so their cost of construction is less when they're able to cluster the homes on a smaller portion of the lot. Um there is written into our existing bylaw a disincentive, which is the special permit process. And I don't recommend having this be a special permit process because what you're telling a developer is you're saying, we want you to do a conventional subdivision because that's easier uh for them. We don't want you to do this uh special permit. But we um are willing to give you this as an option. Now, most communities uh that have this type of development feel the opposite. They say, hey, we really want you to do an open space community over a conventional subdivision because we feel like we're getting something out of it. And what we're getting is we're getting the preservation of our rural character because we have all of this permanently protected open space that we didn't have to buy. The developer is preserving it for us for free. And uh we're just getting the benefit of all of this permanently protected open space. And of course, uh you know, we have fewer curb cuts and, you know, all of the there's lots of stormwater benefits, water quality benefits to having large contiguous areas of permanently protected open space. So in those communities, they make the open space style development a by right process by site plan review instead of a special permit process. So those are some things that probably Carter and I will be talking about tomorrow. And then, you know, we'll come up with a draft. And then we'll uh discuss it with you folks later. I it's hard to get into the weeds that something that hasn't even been thought of yet. So this is super early, so I'm wondering if we should just kind of move on to the next one. Um realizing that we just haven't thought any of this out yet.
Oh yeah, thanks. Uh thanks. No, the only the only point that I was gonna ask, I guess, and Lori, your point, maybe you need to find in the details of this first, but question would be buildable versus non-buildable lands in greater lot, in greater acreage. So if uh, you know, let's say twenty percent of the hundred acres is considered wetlands. Uh does a builder get credit for those twenty percent to build the density? Uh where he would, whereas in the in, you wouldn't be able to build that at all on those um non-buildable lots.
Yeah, that that's a common complaint with some of the open space community bylaws. Where the the only open space that they get is junk land anyway that can't be built on. So it is important to have design standards for the open space. And the existing bylaw has some good design standards. Um and what they say is that the percentage of open space in uh the open space set aside can't be greater than the percentage of open space in the overall parcel. So what this means is that if twenty percent of the total parcel is wetlands, unbuildable, then the only twenty percent of the permanently protected open space can be that. So that means that they have to add some uplands to increase. So instead of having, let's go back to our example of a hundred acre parcel. Thirty-five percent is the minimum open space set aside. Of that thirty-five acres, only twenty percent of the open space area can be wetlands. So that means that they're gonna have to add upland to it. So maybe instead of protecting thirty-five acres as open space, they'd have to protect forty-two acres because they had to add open space to make make uh the open space set aside consist of only twenty percent upla- um wetlands. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you. I guess, um any, are there any other comments from the, any other ZBA members? Otherwise.
I have, I have one more question.
Okay.
I I don't know how to raise my hand. I can't figure it out. I know, I know the town clerk had given directions on how to do it. I I can't figure it out um with the new format. I, and I do need readers, and I'm wearing them, so it's not that. So um I, so that for us is basically um the benefit for us is just that we're getting the open space. And then the developers can get the high-dense bonus and everything else. But we haven't figured out the open space benefit yet or anything. It, I'm just trying to figure this out, and maybe um.
So so what we're talking about is updating our existing bylaw to make it work better. But this hasn't been done yet. So, you know, you folks wanting to come in at an earlier stage in the process. And so this is just a discussion item at this point.
Teeter totter.
I I have nothing to share as far as uh giraffes. It hasn't been written yet.
I think one piece of input, though, that would be important, is right now the bylaw is if you could do a hun- hundred single-family homes, now they can be denser, but it's still a hundred single-family homes. What do the boards think about opening it up to duplexes, triplexes, or, you know, do do you wanna keep it single-family to single-family, single-family to cottage? Like, I know myself wouldn't want to see, like, garden apartments, like multifamily like that, because it would just be out of place in the neighborhoods. So you know, I might be okay.
I think, I think Carter has his hand raised.
Oh, um, yeah, I I did just want to add, um, there one reason it might make sense to allow things that, you know, you you might think wouldn't fit in the neighborhood is because there are within it um or options we can, we can revise to have a an open space buffer. You know, a certain amount of space between other um houses in the area. So even if you did build like a a larger, you know, multi-multi-family building, it would have to be set aside away from um any houses that are around it. So the open space would be kind of a buffer between that and an existing neighborhood.
I just know in the master plan, which was just done in twenty twenty, if you read all of the survey results, there was a lot of comments about no high density, no high density. So for me, I wouldn't think that would go along with what people were looking for when they were doing the you know, when we were doing the master plan and we looked for input.
So, and I think we just had the moratorium on, was that in twenty nineteen? On um duplexes as well. I would have raised my hand, but I was still unmuted. Sorry. How to how to raise their hand, that would be great.
That the moratorium was just uh to provide the ti- town time to put forth design guidelines. Isn't that right, Amy?
No, we actually, um, peop- people were calling for less duplexes, so we increased the frontage and the lot sizes. So we're cutting back on the amount of duplexes because there was a large outcry in town of too many duplexes, too much high density. They wanted to keep it um the way it was. So that's what I see going forth with this. I have concern if we go to triplexes and multifamily little apartment buildings that that it goes against what the residents were calling for in the master plan.
I agree. Um what is the actual definition? What what um qualifies as high density?
Um, well, the missing middle uh that, of course, we've been talking about with the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities and CHAPA. Um they define that as up to, I think it's, well, it's the fifteen units per acre. So that was all part of the MBTA
Right.
Discussion. So if it's um above fifteen units per acre, that's considered high density.
Okay.
Visualizing it, it's probably different per town. Like, high density in one town would be so different than high density in Boston.
Right, right. So is there something in the middle that we could come up with for our own use?
I guess we can um see what Carter and Lori come up with and uh circle back. Does anybody else have any input?
Yeah, Amy, I think what I would just say is, my only comment is, um, you know, it would be, it would be nice to see sort of like, like a realistic, um, not realistic, but a a a something that actually says like, hey, we looked at the RC District, there's twenty-five parcels of land that would meet the criteria for potential be, you know, potentially be applicable for this bylaw. And here is what could potentially happen. I mean, like, talking about, I mean, I don't know how many parcels of land are ten acres or eight acres. I mean, I feel like we've been told that, you know, this town has been built out already. Um and if it's ju- if it's, you know, if you're looking to sort of like uh project for, say, Juniper or some or some other big ol' big parcel of land that's not yet developed, right, then you can create like overlays there that has sort of some of the open space, open space benefits of it. Um but I would really like to see like, sort of like the, okay, you know, we are trying to solve this problem, and we will do, and it will impact Y, and we will solve it with Z, right? Like, sort of that whole, you know, walkthrough of, you know, navigating the problem, you know, because I think, listen, I served on open space for a number of years. I'm a big proponent of, you know, uh 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 trying to get parcels of land to donate their um, you know, back properties, especially in the northern part of of Northborough um for open space, for, you know, Mount Piska and and the whole rest. So I think the idea of having you know, trying to preserve open space is a great idea, right? But sort of the applicability and the method and the process that you go through to get to what you are actually trying to achieve as a goal, I think is also very important as well.
Can you do that, Lori and Carter? We've actually done that before, I think on another uh, lot that came through for, with, with some questions about frontage. And we, we did look at specifically what parcels such a, that such a zoning law, this was a couple of years back. Um, and I think that's a good point is to, if we wanna open it up to RC, then what lots in fact would be applicable? If there's only three out of, you know, two hundred, two hundred and fifty, then it doesn't really make sense to make a whole bylaw for three lots.
I think we did that with the duplex moratorium. They actually went through and saw how many parcels it would affect.
That's, I think that's, that's a good, because honestly, I think that question would come up even if we were to present this at town meeting. Well, how many lots does this affect? And if you say, you know, thirty out of two hundred, I don't know, is that, is that the right number?
Okay, that sounds good.
Helpful. Yeah, thank you, Paul.
Okay, should we move on?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So Assembly Hall came out of White Cliffs. Didn't, um, Lori, do you wanna explain that?
Yeah, so the next one came out uh, from a recent case that was before the ZBA. And uh, one thing that became glaringly obvious is that we don't have a fence bylaw. And we probably need one. Um, so the idea is to figure out some language that we could include in the zoning bylaw that would address the placement. Measure, how to measure the maximum height. So the maximum height is seven feet. But there are different interpretations for how you measure seven feet. And then how do you address site distance concerns? So that's something that um, Bob and I have been talking about. Putting together, there are some uh, good examples of other towns uh, that have addressed this. So this is something that I'd like to um, certainly get some feedback from the ZBA and the planning board going forward. So this is something that we can talk about, Paul.
Yep.
At the ZBA meeting uh, in January.
Yeah, so I, I guess just, just my two cents on this. So we had a case um, which was an appeal of a zoning, the zoning enforcement officers interpretation of a fence violation. Um, and essentially, you know, it, there's a lot of, I mean, without getting into like the, what the height should be or whatever. You know, there's just a lot of gray area in terms of like, what is an actual violation versus what is not a violation, right? In terms of, and I think what that does is it makes things cloudy for someone like Bob to go in and say on this, you know, section, whatever, you are violating X, Y, and Z, right? To, you know, Lori's point about the, the height of the, the fence, right? Is it across the entire length of the fence? Is it in certain sections? You know, some fences have flat parts and then little peaks. Is it just like on those things as well? Um, and so I think, and also there, you know, there's a, can a fence go, you know, wrap around the entire length of a property? I think that they're just, you know, the, the, the feedback that we got or the sense I got from um, Bob and the zoning enforcement officers, just to have some clarity around it. That's really it. Not to be sort of overly burdensome, but to just spell out in black and white, what is an appropriate thing and what is not. But of course, like this is one of those things where you know, you don't wanna put in a, a bylaw that sort of makes people's fences, you know, violations, right? So being cognizant of, of that as well. So I don't think we need to discuss like what's the appropriate height at this point, but just kind of to give you guys some context there.
Lizzy, I see your hand up.
Thank you. I was, I was seeing if my, it would recognize my hand being raised. Um, and I think that other, other towns had um, had bylaws that we could kind of mimic and use too. So I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, thanks. Moving on, Assembly Hall came out of White Cliffs when they wanted to do a chapel. I think um, Lori, you and Bob came forth with an Assembly Hall definition? And then the board said, well, yeah.
So when we were talking about uh, the White Cliffs zoning, one thing that Bob had mentioned is that there's been a desire for um, other uh, properties i- in our business districts to include uh, an assembly use. And he's been struggling with how to classify them. And so his suggestion was to open up uh, Assembly Hall as uh, a possible use in other districts. Um, so when we were talking about the whole White Cliffs thing, we were talking about uh, comparing Assembly Hall to other similar uses that are currently allowed in the business districts. And with the hospitality overlay, it was decided that Assembly Hall should be a by right use. Uh, so that's something that I was thinking of. That in our business districts and in the industrial district, it would be a by right use. So it would be similar to um, you know, like if you had a, a oh gosh, I, I can't remember the name of the club. That has a, an assembly use, um, like the Knights of Columbus. Hall. Or if you had a VFW hall.
Yeah, that's what.
Uh, those could be some examples.
And Bob mentioned there's a new place near Hillside Grill and they wanted to have maybe birthday parties or gatherings. So he thought he would um, call that an Assembly Hall use. Does the ZBA or planning board see any reason why it should be by special permit? Or why it shouldn't be allowed? Or should it be allowed by right? Any concerns? And if you don't have any tonight, I mean, town meeting is not till April. So anybody can come forth and say, you know what, I thought about it.
Uh, I think John or Carter had their hands up. John's, John's got his hand up now.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I think like for, I, I, I would lean in the direction of kind of a special permit for, of use for this because I, I for by right, I think that just kind of then muddies up a, a larger kind of um, land planning or, 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 or greater kind of planning of the actual, our community as far as business district is business to put in a Assembly Hall. Is that the highest and best use? That would be my concern.
And Carter?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I, I would say by right makes more sense. I, I personally think Assembly Halls are pretty good uses to a community. Um, I guess my one question is just based on our definition here. Um, if it's, you know, a part of a building in which facilities are provided for meetings of a private club. I mean, if this is prohibited in a residential district, would that potentially be interpreted as like, I can't have a book club in my house or somebody could complain because they don't like some gathering somebody's having in their house if this is only allowed in a business district or like what, to what extent are like things that people have in their homes would fall under an Assembly Hall?
So an occasional gathering would just be, you know, the principal use would be single family home or duplex or whatever. Um, so that's the use. Uh, so in this circumstance, the use would be an Assembly Hall. So that would be its purpose. So it wouldn't uh, necessarily be an accessory use. It could be an accessory use, but it could also be a standalone use.
How would something such as a theater or a stage or play, um, how does that, is that Assembly Hall? Because we have those in the schools, we have those in, effectively in churches.
Well, one other things that we were talking about in the White Cliffs example is they wanted to have like a ceremonial space. So it wouldn't be, so the principal use of the space would be Assembly Hall. So it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't be a church because it may not have a religious, it may or may not have a religious aspect to it.
Right.
Uh, so it, it, you can't call it a church. Like a church could be an Assembly Hall, but the principal use is church. And then the accessory would be Assembly Hall within the church.
But if they're having a religious.
Yeah, so this is uh, yeah, I guess that would be a good example. So you know, like for example, there may be, uh, I'm thinking of the Jibbit Hill Grill in Broughton.
Yep.
So they are restaurants, but they have a barn that they use for um, weddings.
Wedding, right.
And special events. So the barn would be like an Assembly Hall. It would s- uh, fit that definition.
Jack, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, I love, is there gonna be a limit on the, a number of um, attendance? Is there gonna be restrictions on um, sprinklers or, you know, what kind of, you can't, if you're doing it by right, you have to some, ha- regulate it in some sort of fashion.
Good point.
It would be regulated by the building code. So this would just be the definition. And then it would be, I mean, if it was of a certain size to trigger site plan approval, then that would be um, how it would be policed is through site plan approval. Otherwise, it would just um, like if it were under a thousand square feet, then it would just be a building permit and subject to the building code. And of course, they have requirements about sprinklers and ADA access and the like.
I mean, we don't have it in, here in Northborough, but I, I have commercial buildings in Worcester where I'd have seven to ten different organizations that would fall under the Assembly designation. And each one would need to get a inspected um, to get a permit beca- because of the size. So depending upon that, so um, y- you, you're packing people into spaces. Um, and they don't always think about, you know, getting out of them.
But wouldn't.
The building code.
Yeah.
I understand, but I have, I have, say I have a seventy thousand foot building. And I, I'm just carving out a thousand square feet in, in one remote area. Um, you know, if you're saying by, by right, somebody may say, okay, well, I had it. I'm, I'm all set. And they don't, you know, they said the building was covered, but they're putting, you know, over an overabundance of people in that space. So somehow or another, you need to regulate what they're allowed.
I was wondering if it should be by special permit because it is social purposes, which is, I don't know.
Uh, yeah, because you, to your point, Jack, if you have um, you know, two hundred people in a space that allows an occupancy of, of a hundred with sprinklers or fire codes that may or may not be being met for that particular part of the building. They may be met, being met for the whole building, but not that particular part.
See Jacob Jones, your hand is up.
Hi again. Yeah, I was actually thinking possibly that question may be answered by the occupancy permit is going to say how many people can occupy it, I assume. Maybe I'm wrong, but I just want, my general comment, um, I really like everything Lori said. I like Bob for coming up with I, this idea. I think it's great. Independently, when I was looking at White Cliffs and I was, we were figuring out what to do with the zoning there. I'm scratching my head. I'm looking at everything on our table of uses. I was like, nothing here really fits.
Right.
Bob concluded like restaurant, because that was the closest and they were gonna prepare and have a kitchen insert foods. I was like, well, yeah, but it's not really the main use. I, I would, my only comment as you move forward on this, if you move forward on this, is to be cognizant of the interplay between this use and preparing of food, because I do think that that still has to be a separate use if you're gonna have a kitchen involved with the Assembly Hall. As opposed to like, look, if someone brings a box of dunk, of random branded donuts, you know, um, I think that's different than if you have a food preparation facility. I do think that's probably gonna trigger one of the different uses. That's just my, I, I wouldn't wanna have this use be used to override someone who really kind of does have food preparation facilities. And they're just saying, oh, we can avoid all this other stuff by jumping into this hole. That's my only thought.
That means, might be something Lori to mention about. So you're saying that it could be a concern if someone needs, they wanna try to bypass and call themselves an Assembly Hall, but they're really preparing food?
Yeah, they're really kind of like a banquet hall that does its in-home catering. It's really more of a catering business. You know, that's, that would be, I think, shouldn't be as of right. I think there should be a little bit more.
Honestly, I think that's more restaurant.
Right. That's what I'm saying. I wouldn't want someone who's real restaurant to be able to be like, no, but I'm an Assembly Hall.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah.
Thanks for again, listening to me. Appreciate it.
You could probably add something like no, you know, in-house, well, I don't know.
No in-house food service. And then do you get into the, the question I would have is, do you get into the, is it, does it, if it's educational or uh, religious, do you get into the um, Dover tax exam to, that, those elements?
Um, well, the Dover amendment has other ramifications.
Sure does.
So of course, uh, Dover amendment is definitely a by right use.
Mm-hmm.
And um, it has limited site plan approval. So there are only certain things you can look at.
I think importantly, we have to really decide if we want it by special permit or by right. Because if it was special permit, then you could look into the whole food aspect of it too.
Mm-hmm.
Well, maybe, maybe if there's uh, in-house food service, that would be special permit, but other than that, it'd be by right.
Sure.
I see John, your hand's up.
I think, I think we should be conscientious though of, you know, the social implications as well. I mean, there could be groups that come in that necessarily could uh, you know, rub people the wrong way or they're, you know, or just not aligned with ideology or the ideology of the larger community. So I just think that's something to be mindful of and I would lean towards the, the special permit to have that ability to, to kind of have, have that authority, so to speak.
We could get in big trouble for doing that. That, that's against the law. We can't discriminate on the basis of religion or free speech or any of that. So that's the danger zone.
Yeah, I, I think I remember when we were talking about this at a previous meeting. Um, one of the reasons we didn't wanna do a special permit was to avoid the possibility of um, a permit being denied because they didn't like the group that was uh, involved and that would not be allowed.
Yep, I agree.
Well, I mean, I, I, I guess I would just say, I don't think that's any reason to not have a special, I mean, I think you know, the ZBA through town council understands sort of the implications of you know, when, when we do have an application in front of us that we're abiding by, you know, the appropriate uh, chapter forty um, code and reasons for denying a special permit.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, in ideology and what a person is or who, or what they stand for is not applicable. So.
I, I think the discussion that we were having at the time is that if you look at the use table, cultural use, which is very similar to what we're talking about here.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, nonprofit club or a membership organization. Both of those are allowed by right in all business districts except for the highway business district. In those cases, it's allowed by special permit.
Why do you think that is?
Probably for the same reason, because no-
Probably for the same reason, because nobody wanted to get into the legal quagmire that that could bring up. Right, e- even if you have a, even if as a planning board or as, or the ZBA, we have a valid reason. Right, that doesn't mean that they're not gonna claim something that it was for some other reason.
But why would it not be allowed by right in that particular district? And why would it need a special permit? And hi- it was highway business?
Yeah, highway business, I wonder if maybe because they were trying to discourage it from going into the highway business district? Cuz it wasn't the highest or best use.
The assembly hall?
Um.
Cultural.
Uh, cultural use or um. The other one, uh, nonprofit club.
Or maybe just not an a high demand applicable location. Similar to the, if you only have thirty, you know, properties in resident C. Residential C, why make a whole zoning uh, regulation about it? I don't know.
I agree, I think it's strange, right, you know? You you allowed, you allowed in Business West, but for highway business that goes to the Board of Appeals?
Yeah.
Like, what could, what could we possibly say that wouldn't? You know, delineate the differences between those two parts of town, but anyway.
Exactly.
Carter?
I mean, I I my only, I mean, cuz is the highway business, is that just along Route nine?
Yes.
Yes, pretty much.
I'm kinda wondering, I mean, it's. That, that's kinda, I guess, I mean, there's, there's no sidewalks over there, there's no uh, really, nothing else is there but Route nine. Um, so I'm kinda wondering if it was just kinda like. That, that's not really the, the place for, for something that, well, anyone would like. Be walking to, um, I guess it was just like Walmart and a gas station over there, so.
I know, there's a golf club, or used to be.
Then there's the.
Lori said highest or best use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe they wanted hotels and gas stations and car dealerships.
Mm-hmm.
Didn't want someone buying a property to have a small assembly sun, assembly hall type cultural center.
I I I think, I guess my two senses is, is, I I think to Jacob's point about Bob coming up with ideas, I think it's a great. It's a great sort of source of stuff, because he's sort of on the front lines of.
Yes.
Of, you know, sort of dealing with these issues. Um, I, what I would say is really the question is, is whether it's by right or it's a special permit, um. Having not really thought too much about it, except for the the last week, I guess I would err on the side of having it be a special permit.
Yep.
Mainly due to the fact that a lot of our business districts have bought residential zones, and you can have certain properties and just kind of like. Thinking, you know, anecdotally about certain issues that I've come up with in front of the ZBA in the past, you know, that's sort of like the, the, the crux for a lot of friction, right, is. Residential zones right next to business zones, and there being sort of that, you know? Um, I live next to a business district that's gonna put in something, whatever it is, right, that's always a friction, so having a special permit. You know, having someone to go through a special permit and go through that process, sort of like, you, you know, you. Bring it down to a point where you can set hours of operation, you can set, you know, uh, you know, ti- times it, it can be used, that's, you know. Sound or whatever the case is, you know, all the things al- allow us as a board to sort of. You know, not necessarily deny it for whatever reason, but to be able to put sort of, you know, uh, checks on um, those properties, that's what I would say. Just like White Cliffs, right, White Cliffs abuts an entire residential zone of people. So.
Do you think for businesses, business west and downtown business all special permit, or is there any? By right?
Uh, so I would actually probably flip how some of these are are set up, where like highway business and highway business southwest, like. You can put whatever you want over there, but um, you know, I guess I would need to just think about it more. Um, in terms of like what an assembly hall like really means.
Yep.
You know?
Okay.
But.
Should we move on to the next one?
Sure.
Hotel motel conference center, so Carter had um, brought up. Allowing them in Business East, they're currently allowed by special permit in all the other zones. So we had a discussion on, we're not sure why they weren't allowed in Business East, maybe it was sewer capabilities. Hmm, maybe it was the closeness to residential zones, but we didn't know why, so it came up for discussion. Um, would, would we wanna open up hotel motel conference centers in Business East?
So I guess.
Yeah.
Carter, Carter's gonna hand up.
Yeah, um, I mean, the, the other, I guess, piece of why I was looking into that was, um. As we were talking about the White Cliffs, I I was kinda just thinking of like, well, what? If we're going to have this large wedding venue, how else could the town benefit from something? Like that, um, and so it was kind of just a. Where else could different kinds of investment that could bring revenue and um, foot traffic closer to the downtown area? Um, obviously, this would require a special permit, as I, I agree there. There would be plenty of places in the Business East, this probably would not be appropriate, um, but it was kinda just to give. Flexibility of what else could um, come into the, the town.
Does anyone have any input?
Yeah, man, I I guess what I would say is, you know, and I think uh. I think Brad might have been uh, he brought this up, like, you know, Northborough sort of sits between. You know, the, the baseball fields that we have and the hockey rink, so having, you know, hotels, bringing people, you know, i- it's sort of generating revenue in that. That way is, 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 you know, generally a, a positive addition, I think. My only two things, I think maybe you mentioned this about Business East, is um. You know, you, there's not really like plots of land that this would be applicable to. And then the other thing is the infrastructure piece, you know, a lot of Business East is on uh, septic. Um, you know, so like, if you think about Business East where, you know, Blue Square Pizza is, that section where uh, neighborhood tavern, that's all septic. Um, and I think it ends somewhere around the police station, maybe. Um, so that, that's my only concern would be just the, the, the infrastructure that's not there, and then. Um, you know, wh- what is this actually, like, which Pete, is there a plot of land where this could potentially go? You know, White Cliffs is kind of one, but. Those would be my questions. Now, does anyone else in the ZBA have any other comments?
This is my special permit, right, we're talking about just including it as a special permit within the Business East?
Yeah, correct.
This is another property type use, I I don't see an issue with it, just on that, on that merits alone, it's commercial.
Okay. Maybe you wanna go to the next one, or?
Sure, um, Carter, do you wanna discuss it, Carter brought this one forward too?
Yeah, um, so this is, um, where are we? Oh yeah, so um, allowing all of the home occupation uses in um. Some of the business districts, I think we've got downtown business, Business East and Business West, um, so these are. Business, I mean, yeah, it's, these are the, the home occupation uses that are allowed in some of the residential areas by a special permit, um. And it's allowing some of these small, like, businesses that, um, is kind of in addition to, to the owner, um. Occupied houser, and um, they're not allowed in the business districts, even though there are. A good number of single-family um, houses in some of the business districts, so this would just allow um. Those to open smaller businesses um, in the business district.
Not speaking for everybody, but I think as our planning board, we thought it's already, they're already business districts, so we thought it was okay to allow them. And just for context, um, there are eighteen single-family homes in downtown business, seventeen in the Business East District. And seven in the Business West District. Suzie?
Thank you, Lori, any of the, um, any of the cases that have come before us, um, looking for. Um, like any of the home office uses, like I remember the, the um, the van that was coming for the dog grooming, um. Any of those cases, were they located in any of these? I I meant to look, but I couldn't, I totally dropped the ball on it.
No.
Yep.
That's inside then.
That was residential.
Here for almost four years, all the other ones were either in residential districts, the one with the van, that was an attached single-family home. So we need to get a variance because it wasn't detached.
Okay.
Does anyone have any opposition to doing this?
I do not.
We're seeing none, we can just move on to the next one?
Sounds good.
Okay, so um, at the design review, we were looking into parking. And one of the members noted that for all the loading areas, they called them births. And um, there were a lot of um, places where it was called a birth, and if you look up. A birth, it has to do with ship and shipping, and he's like, that doesn't make sense at all, we have no definition for birth. So we considered changing everywhere birth was to loading dock, loading bay, or service door, but that was a lot of changes. So then he's like, well, maybe we'll just define birth as a loading area such as a service store, bay, or dock. Because um, in the past, if there was no definition, we'd go to the dictionary, and uh, it didn't match the use. So pretty much, that's what we're doing, just adding a definition for birth.
I don't, I don't really, I don't really have any comments there.
Yeah, it was kinda just a housekeeping one.
Yep.
And then the next one has to do with um. Mixed-use parking, if we scroll down a little bit, Lori.
Oh.
This also was when we were discussing parking. And there was difference of opinion on how it was worded. Um, and how people were perceiving how it was read, so we tried to clarify the language. And um, Bob and Lori both have reviewed it. So if nobody has any questions on that.
Um.
I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry, I'm just kinda rereading it. Five thousand square feet.
So you're allowing for less required parking?
Yes, but it already did require, it already did, but the way he was reading it was every time you go up five thousand square feet. You could take twenty-five percent off the total. But this was more saying every additional five thousand square feet. The additional requirements were reduced by twenty-five percent. So the way he was reading it was the bigger the building, the less parking you had to have.
Do we have any on-street parking?
Um. What do you mean?
Well, we don't really have any on-street parking.
In town?
Right.
Not downtown.
Hmm. Or, but you.
Like straight would have on-street parking.
Who, um. Off-street, but, but, and there mixed uses there? Again, where does this apply? Mixed use with off-street parking.
Yeah, so, so this would give you uh, the ability to reduce the overall. Number of parking spaces for super-large buildings. When you have residential uses as well as like commercial uses. So the rationale is that there are different hours when the parking would be needed.
Okay, got it.
So it, and it says may, so the planning board or whoever the site plan approval authority is. May opt to not reduce parking. It just gives them a, a little bit of a wiggle room.
Okay, got it.
So the, the next one about valet parking. And actually, I'd be really interested in hearing the uh, ZBA opinion. So we've been uh, going back and forth. Um, so the first question was. Does section B of the zoning bylaw allow for valet parking? Now, I believe it does, and uh, you know, I'm sorry for the, I was having all sorts of trouble with the formatting here. And then I was in a rush, so I wa- didn't have time to fix it. Uh, so excuse all of the weird spacing, um, but the language, I'm gonna read it. For the number of parking spaces determined under. Subsection B two of this section, the special permit granting authority may grant a special permit to locate up to one hundred percent. Of such parking on a different lot than the lot with the building or use served by such parking, provided the special permit granting authority. Determines that such an arrangement is superior to onsite parking. And or furthers the town of Northborough's downtown planning objectives. All such arrangements shall be presented by the proponent in writing. Reviewed by the town's legal counsel and approved by the special permit granting authority. Uh, we were talking about striking the language and recorded with the property deed, um. So the, I believe that this language is flexible enough that valet parking would be allowed. Uh, ZBA members, what do you think? I just saw a thumbs up go by by Jacob, I think when he gives a thumbs up, it goes across the screen.
Why is the proposed language limit of valet parking to just restaurant and entertainment?
That's a good question.
I mean, there are.
I think.
Other uses of valet parking, uh, medical facilities, valet park for patients, uh, other uses perhaps.
So sorry about my dog. If, if you folks think that E. Allows for valet parking, then I don't think we need F at all.
Uh, so.
So F would go away if the answer to B to um. My question is, is E is flexible enough to allow valet parking?
But I'm thinking assembly hall might want a valet parking.
I think in E, it's not saying, if you just go with E, right, it doesn't have.
Yeah, E is anything.
Oh, anything, okay.
Right, F would be limiting it.
Oh, that's where, okay, yeah, I agree. Okay, sorry.
And I agree with your interpretation of E, Lori, I, I think it, it does provide for valet.
Mm-hmm.
I see Suzie, you have your hand up, you can just speak too.
I figured out how to raise my hand, I just held it up and it automatically put it on the screen, so I don't know how to put it down. Um. But my first question about it, and the only thing is, and this, you might not be able to answer it. But the one hundred percent being off, um, off property. What about handicap parking, like, do the handicap vehicles, are they able to be off-site? Because I ju- I just went to a valet event, um, and this is completely random, but it was at a bookstore. And there was valet parking there, but the handicap vehicles stayed on property, I noticed.
Mm-hmm.
So the valet was there taking the cars, but the handicap people had their own cars, right, like, right up front by the door. Um, cuz it was for a speaker event, and then um, the valet took all the other cars, so I, that was. For the up to one hundred percent, I just don't know if you wanna keep that. I just don't know if you want to keep that in or maybe say something about handicap vehicles. I don't, that would be something maybe to check with the state, just to make sure that we're covered, um, by those laws. I, and again, and to be, yeah, like not to answer here or in this, um, format, but having just been to that event, um, that was the first thing that I thought of, just seeing that number up to 100%.
So I think that's a good point, Suzie, because the question would be, can valet drivers actually drive handicap vehicles? Because sometimes they're modified for a specific person.
Right.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I, I think we can add some language to E that would cover that.
Yeah, something about, there's gotta be something.
Instead of it being 100%, we can say, you know, a- add, add a phrase to that sentence that says that ADA parking must be accommodated on-site.
Yes, yep.
I wonder if we're gonna add to E, if we should also add um, number five and the other one, where the valet parking area is not located in a residential zoning. I think of like, I don't know if it's residential, but when you go to the Patriots game, like a lot of times there are people with yards that are leasing it out for parking.
That's not valet though. That's different.
That's true, that is parking. But you never know, like someone in a residential zone can say, okay, I'll lease you my parking, but it's in a residential zone, so it might.
Interesting, yeah.
Be offending to the neighbors, you know?
Yeah, because I think the biggest question on this one is, okay, well, where are the cars going? Right? And if they're going onto somebody's residential yard or residential space.
Mm-hmm.
Right? A week causing a bigger issue, or even if they're parking on residential streets.
So maybe it should be within locate, um, hmm, yeah, that might be a criteria to fold in.
Right, I mean, it is by.
Yeah.
It, it, it is, you know, saying that they have to grant a special permit, so I'm assuming they would have a location that they're going to state where they're putting these cars, but.
Yes.
But I think it's good to mention not a residential, so people don't waste their time coming in front of the board. And they've already approached a residential person. And then as a board, we have to say, sorry, we're not going to approve that. Because we probably know we're not going to in advance.
Okay, I can figure out how I can fit that into E. And then we'll just get rid of F. Everybody's on board with that?
Like the, the satellite lot must also be approved by the special permit granting authority. The satellite parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and it won't be in a residential area.
Okay.
Um, I think, I think Carter has his hand.
I, I know somebody did.
Yep, um, just, just one thing about the, um, the adding the, kind of handicap property has to be on-site. Um, the way that I'm reading the current bylaw, it looks like it's kind of, uh, it's not necessarily intending remote parking. It looks like it also is kind of like trying to give some kind of flexibility to, um, if you have like lots close together or, um, old buildings on lots where there's not really any place to put parking, um, because the lot, the building is covering too much of the lot. It's allowing parking like nearby on like a, a neighboring lot, even though it's two separate lots. Um, so I'm kind of wondering if the handicap parking, instead of it being, it has to be on the same lot, if it's just, it has to be a certain distance from the building or a certain distance from the door, something like that.
I mean, I, I guess I think that it should be available at both spots. If you're, if, if you're, um, you know, in a, in a handicap ne- needing spot, you can either go valet where somebody could possibly take, but I don't really know if, if valet drivers can, can necessarily drive a handicap vehicle. Like I said, some of them are so modified.
Well, and I think if I remember correctly, there are actually regulations as far as how far away from the entrance the, the handicap parking can be.
That, that is true, um, but I don't know how that applies to valet.
No, but it, but if you're saying that they have to park on-site, okay, well, now they have to be within a certain range of, of the entrance.
Yes, that is, that is true, but let's say that lot, that spot were full, then what do you do? And you have spots available that are valet, you know, that, that becomes.
Yeah, but that's gonna be the same, that's gonna be the same whether you're going to the supermarket or a valet lot.
Yep.
Right? If there's no handicap spots, there's no handicap spots.
Yep.
I guess my point is, I, I think the bylaw as we currently have it is not only thinking about valet parking, it's also thinking about just a little bit of flexibility in, um, parking lots on maybe unusual lots that it doesn't, doesn't have room for a parking lot. Um, and so to, to eliminate kind of the ability to move all of the parking onto a different lot, just to kind of be careful of that, um, that this might not just be about valet parking.
Um, I, I just, okay. I think in my mind, it, 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 it kills two birds with one stone, which is, you know, work with the parking requirements in town, but also create a downtown, which in this town has some limitations with parking.
Sounds like Lori's gonna, um, tweak it and she can send it back out to all of us with the updates. But it sounds like E covers the majority of it and then we'll update it, yep.
Yes.
So, and one other thing I want to add before we went into the next one is, um, Carter and Bill were working on a definition for what were the, what was it called again?
Data centers.
Of data centers.
Oh.
So that is gonna be another bylaw.
Hopefully.
Hopefully in the spring. Okay. So the next one is, um, I brought up donation bin bylaw and storage container. Um, we were, I'm on the master plan in MPIC and design review. And so for the past couple of years, there's been a lot of talk about downtown beautification. And I'm gonna share some pictures. So. Let's start with the donation bins. So Shrewsbury and other towns have a bylaw and it's gonna fall under the Board of Selectmen. It's probably not gonna fall under the zoning because they'll be grandfathered. But Shrewsbury has a bylaw where you need to apply for a permit for a donation bin. Where in our town, they seem to be dropped all over town. And there are some in town that we don't even know who own them. So if there is a bylaw for the donation bins, they'll have to apply to the Board of Selectmen and they get a permit. And it says that it has to be in a certain area, like this probably wouldn't be allowed on the sidewalk and near the road. It would have to be in the parking lot.
Yeah.
So it's just getting a handle on the donation bins.
Yep.
And so that's what the donation bin bylaw is. And then along those same terms, it was, um, storage containers. There are some towns coming up with bylaws about storage containers. And whether or not they're considered temporary or a permit. So there's a bylaw, and I think Lori, you and, um, Bob were gonna review it. I don't know if you've had time to do it.
Yeah, I, I, I did ask Bob. I, I haven't heard from him, so I don't think that he had time to review it. And honestly, I haven't gone through it with a fine-tooth comb yet either.
I have a couple of questions on that, slightly related to the refining of the term. Because, um, and this is talking about dumpsters. Should be screened from view? Shouldn't it be screened from street view?
Yeah, I just typed that in quickly with the picture. Right now, we already have a bylaw where the dumpsters are screened from view.
Screen, so, though.
Yeah. It might be from the street or your butters too. I don't have it open in front of me. So these are almost like a dumpster.
I can share it, Amy, if you want me to.
Yes, please.
If you can unshare.
Sure. But this is another one we can discuss once Bob and Lori have time to review it.
Donation bins, okay. Because dumpsters should be screened from street view, and maybe that needs to be changed from us.
We have it in our bylaws under 709s, oh two oh, about the dumpsters.
Oh nine, oh two oh, okay.
It's in there somewhere.
I was actually trying to find that and I couldn't find it. That's just me though.
Those are the ones like design review use, so that's why. I know it's in there. I don't know the exact number.
Okay.
All right, so it's on page 794, exposed storage areas. Machinery, garbage dumpsters, service areas, truck loading areas, utility buildings, and structures shall be screened from view of abutting properties and streets using plantings, fencing, and other methods approved by the Site Plan Approval Authority.
Okay, I have a question on that, but that's for later.
Okay.
Uh, just to play devil's advocate. Of course, you don't want them to be totally screened from view because then people won't be able to find them.
Right, well, it's not the donation collection bins. It was more for the, um, storage containers, I think.
Okay.
Like, and part of the storage container bylaw too, it's a shipping container, they'd still be allowed in industrial districts because shipping and receiving is part of their business.
Mm-hmm.
Or transportation. I use my son's Microsoft word. He has the Microsoft account. That's why it says David. He's not doing this.
Okay.
So Lori, did you say that you, uh, were going to review both the donation bin bylaw language and the storage container bylaw language?
Yes, and I haven't done it yet. I, I, I have read it, but I haven't gone through it with a fine-tooth comb.
So I, we could provide you some input in writing, I suppose, but would that be helpful or looking for input tonight?
If, if you have input that you'd like to forward to me, then I'd be happy to forward it to the planning board.
It just, um, seems to me, at least the donation bin seems to be quite, um, subjective. Um, a lot of subjective terms in there, like clean and attractive. What exactly does that mean? And, um, and, you know, your idea of attractive could definitely be different than mine. I mean, I have a neighbor down the road who just, you know, they just painted their home. And I'm sure that it's just lovely. They're very proud of it. It's just awful. In my opinion, so, um, that type of thing, just, you know, and it talks about apparent authority and um, there's just some, a lot of subjectivity in there that I think I might, if you don't mind, I just might put a, put an email together and forward that on to you for what it's worth. Um, it does say that, that the donation bins would be, um, uh, provided by a permit from the select board. Is that, is that a business we want our select board to be in, is issuing a permit for these things? Or is that more appropriately issued by another official in town? That would be the question I have. And then the donation bins, I'm, I'm assuming my experience is that they're mostly operated by, by nonprofit or charitable organizations and you know, $150 initial, initial fee and $85 a year, to me seems to be, be a bit steep. I, I don't know that.
Yeah.
The right, what the right figure would be, but you know, if the, if the local church has, you know, three or four bins around town, that's a, that, that's a hefty cost every year. Um, probably just, you just get rid of the bins and take the money and buy the clothes that you're trying to collect or something, but those are just my initial thoughts. And the same thing goes for the, for the container. Um, the storage container. Uh, same thing with, you know, clean and attractive. I mean, those pictures, one of those containers seems to be just fine with, as far as I'm concerned, but you know, maybe someone would have a different opinion, obviously.
I don't know you'd want that next to your business though, in downtown.
Is that a storage container?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, ma- maybe so.
Cut and paste of like, this was cut and paste from, um, Shrewsbury. So I put a little highlight and said the selectmen could pick the cost, you know? How much they would charge for a fee. So this was just the first go-through, but it's good to get input because a lot of it's up for debate and to change.
I mean, again, a lot of subjectivity comes into play here that I think we, if we want to leave it in, we need definitions like talks about unsafe, disordered, and unsanitary condition. What, what exactly is that? Particularly disordered. What is, what is a disordered condition? Let me. I don't know.
Yeah.
I think anything to do with the cleanliness would come under law of health, they'd probably.
It would. Yeah.
I, I think Suzie's.
Oh, Suzie has her hand up.
Um, I was, I was just thinking about that, um, the charge for the, the, the bins, the, um, textile bins, that maybe if they are on the property of like a nonprofit, such as like the ones on the school property, um, properties are for the PTO. Um, maybe like the church, like, um, I'd had pointed out, like they're obviously, um, you know, they're like, you know, tax-free organization, stuff like that. They could submit that to the town, but then some of these are just kind of like put on the street and you don't know who owns them.
Right.
Um, but maybe the PTO ones, because they are a, a big moneymaker and I do, I, I, I sometimes say that the Malacca PTO should write me a thank you note for when I clean out the closets of my, of my children, because I know there's like a huge spike, um, for the, the money that they take in. But, um, they do make a lot of money, so it would be, um, those, those costs would be very prohibitive. But you know that it is for the school, um, and school is part of the town. So that is, um, something that I would look into. So maybe if they can submit something for a nonprofit, or you could put that into that, that would be good.
Mm-hmm. I've been thinking like, maybe the first year, if you are a good tenant, you know, for the first year, then maybe it's licensing every three years, like doesn't have to be every year if it's gonna be taxing on us, on a group. Or a staff member.
And there should be some incentive to keep it clean, keep it orderly, keep it from, stuff from overflowing and landing outside the bin, which happens. Hmm. Must contain, everything must be contained within the bin.
There's some dropdown on Blake Street and nobody knows who owns them. And it's municipal property.
And you see stuff sometimes well-intentioned, but it's outside the bin. You can tweak it, yeah. You can tweak it, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Tweak it.
So those are the last two, I think.
Um, I have a question, what, going back to the storage container slash dumpster thing, do we have anything in our town that talks about the um flexible dumpsters or bagsters and where they should go? Because I definitely have seen a number of them in different places in people's front lawns. And how can we manage that so that people aren't looking at basically junk piles in their front lawn as they go down their neighborhood?
I know generally people use those when they're cleaning out their homes, getting ready for like maybe a sale or something like that, I.
Yeah, you'd like.
I don't know how we would regulate that. Because you know, it's uh, when people are demolishing their bathrooms, they're required by law to get a dumpster. So I, I think that might be.
I think there's.
Not something that we should deal with in zoning.
I don't know, I look at this in a right, you know, residential area and you see people with junk yards in front of their house that are basically bagsters, and they're there for months or years.
They're not using them for storage for years, I I I don't know.
They're using them basically to put a lot of the junk that's coming out of their house.
I think that's more of a border health issue.
Yeah, it would probably.
So dumpsters, bagsters come under flexible dumpsters. And maybe that's something we can basically not regulate, but basically say there are rules and bylaws to where you can place them. I don't care if somebody has them in their backyard, but to have them in their front yard, I mean, you have to drive by every day.
Oh, I know when they're full, they, the company comes and picks them up and takes them away. So. Most of the time I've seen them, they're in people's driveways.
Typically, yes. But would they not, I mean, would, would it not be something you would want screened from view or from the street? Like a dumpster? In their front yard?
Typically, they're just there for like a week or two. I mean, it might be up to a month. Uh, I don't know how we would regulate that, like I don't, I don't know how Bob would stay on top of something like that. Because he'd have to know where everybody is, um, you know? If they're, if they're gonna sell their house, I I don't know how that would be possible to stay on top of.
Would, I'm not saying necessarily stay on top of, but at the same time, put it in the realm of dumpster, which it falls under flexible dumpster. If you wanted to rent or use a flexible dumpster, you get that, that, you know, um, you get a bagster. And they put it, people put it in their front lawns or anywhere they want. And then you have junk piles in front of your, anyways.
I just think if it went on for too long, you would just call the building inspector because junkyards aren't allowed, so I guess I wouldn't regulate it, but if there was someplace with a problem, I guess you could unspun up.
But wh- why couldn't we say that under the dumpster rules and regulations, call such, such things as flexible dumpsters or bagsters? And that way.
Are, are zoning bylaws having to do with dumpsters only apply for those who are going through site plan review? So. So that's, uh, remember that anything that exists is uh grandfathered by zoning. So. Um, eh, when they're going through site plan review, then we are looking at their dumpster location and making sure that they're screened. But there are lots of dumpsters in towns that doesn't have any sort of screening and we don't have any ability to require it unless they go through site plan review.
Okay, okay.
Okay, um, I just want to thank the, the zoning board of appeals for coming tonight, giving us your input, and if you have any more input, definitely email it to Lori. And if you want to meet again, the beginning of the year after Lori and Carter finished the open space uh, by law, we can go over it again.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you very much, Amy, and thank you to the rest of the board. Uh, I see Jacob's hand is up right now. I think deep down, he does miss being on the ZBA, so I know that for a fact. Jacob, I don't know if, did you have any other comments?
Hundred percent, just before y'all uh adjourn the meeting, I just wanted to give a quick two cents of food for thought, just from the perspective of the select board. Obviously, the select board is concerned, as I'm sure everyone is, always of trying to have an efficient as possible um, town meeting. So my only just ask, as particularly the planning board who will continue the process of zoning bylaws and have hearings and all that sort of stuff. As you get to the point where we're getting close to pr- these coming to the select board, if you could help us by giving some thought on what things could be potentially combined, even related things obviously could be combined, but even things that maybe aren't particularly related but seem really uncontroversial. The more we could combine and consolidate, and I know uncontroversial is hard to know what's uncontroversial ahead of time. But if you could just help us with that thought process, we would like to, some towns consolidate all zoning things into a single item. I don't think that that's gonna be helpful, because some people may like some and not likes others, and then you get people trying to amend it, you don't want to do that. If you could just help us, though, try to figure out what could be consolidated, just to help us with efficiency at town meeting, that's all.
Yeah, that's great input.
And thanks.
Town meeting efficiency, I agree with. Um, but yes, thank you very much, Amy, and thank you to the rest of the board a- and Lori, um, you as well. Um, I don't have any other comments, I don't know if anyone else from the ZBA has any comments. But I guess uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the zoning board of appeals meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the zoning board of appeals meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Is there a second? I think we, yep. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote, uh, Jack?
Yes.
John? Uh, who knows, yes, Suzie?
Yes.
And then Ed?
Yes.
Alright, great, thank you guys very much.
Bye guys, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
To figure out how everybody does that with their hands, they're clapping, giving thumbs up. Alright, it's now nine twenty-nine, and next on the agenda, we have A and R's lot releases and bonds. Um, Lori, do you mind pulling it up? I might have it too somewhere.
You're muted, Lori.
You're still muted.
Yeah. I'm talking more to myself than anything else. Alright, I got it.
Thank you.
So this is uh, the A and R plan. So what they're proposing to do is to divide a single parcel into three separate lots. So one of them is a conventional lot, uh, and then we have two reduced frontage lots. Um, so uh, lot thirteen R has a hundred and ninety-nine thousand square feet. And lot fourteen R one has two hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet and change. So I did um, verify that uh, they have sufficient frontage and area. And uh, the, I did have them put the lot shape factor on. And I verified their calculations are correct. Um, so they do meet the lot shape factor. And of course, this is on Howard Street, which is a uh scenic road. So as part of this approval, I will remind them that they have to come in uh, for scenic road uh, permit to remove the stone wall, so you can see uh, on the plan where the stone wall is. I'm not sure where they plan to put the driveway. Whether stone wall will be disturbed on lot A or not. Um, but definitely there is stone wall on the other two lots.
Thanks, I do appreciate how they did the lot shape factor, they did the requirements, they also did the contiguous upland, they've given a lot of detail. And I think that's great. But in your opinion, you've checked everything and does it meet all of the criteria for the A and R?
It does.
Does anyone on the board have any questions?
No.
Hearing none, do I have a motion? Oh, sorry.
Oh, um, yeah, I was just, because we're been having fun with the scenic road permits recently, um. I was just wondering, is, I mean, are they also able to connect it to that common driveway, or would they have to um, do the driveway to Howard Street?
Um, well, actually, yeah, I mean, they do have existing homes already. So it really would just be lot A that would be impacted, and uh, like I said, it depends on where they decide that they want to put their driveway, whether they'll have to come per scenic road permit or not. Because the uh, the wall is segmented already.
So I'm assuming since those houses are already on the site, they meet all the setbacks and everything? If they're going to, was this one big lot?
So I, I think the deal was, so you can see, form our lot line. So what they ended up having to do in order to get this to be a buildable lot, is they didn't meet the area requirement. So they had to purchase some land from um, lot thirteen R, so you can see, it used to have this configuration. So they had a lot more frontage to begin with, so they were originally a standard lot. But now they have enough frontage, I mean, enough area for a reduced frontage lot. So. That's how they're able to get this lot A, is by buying land from the butters.
Okay, but the fourteen R and thirteen R, those were already previously lots. So they meet all the setbacks and everything.
Yep.
So lot A was the one that was carved out.
And that was from an abutter, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, for this uh.
Ownership?
The Hogans must have sold some lands, some of their land, uh, to create lot A.
So same ownership then?
Uh, well, this is prepared for Brendan and Erin Perry.
Okay. Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, from.
So Brendan and Erin Perry own lot fourteen R?
Yeah.
So maybe Jesse and Kathleen Hogan own lot A.
James.
Lot thirteen R.
Yeah, it actually lists both, both families as owners and prepared for.
Yeah, that's what I was questioning.
Right.
Does it, it doesn't create.
There's um, Brendan Perry's on the, on the call.
Right.
Brendan, did you have something to add? He just called in.
It doesn't create a non-conforming lot somewhere else.
Brendan, can you just state your name and address?
Hi, ca- ca- can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, yeah, this is uh, Brendan Perry uh, from four twenty-one Howard Street. Uh, so yeah, I was just listening on, on YouTube. Um, yeah, so, so it's two properties, so it's us and the Hogans, it's, it's a joint venture between the two of us. Uh, so we're redesigning both our lots to create lot A. So, so we're doing it together with the Hogans.
Okay.
Be a budding property owner.
Yeah, yes.
And it doesn't create a non-conforming lot somewhere else?
No, uh, so all three lots are conforming.
Okay.
And so lot fourteen R must already have a easement over thirteen R? Cause it looks like the driveway goes through.
So, so if I understand this correctly, uh, Brendan, um, so the configuration of lot thirteen R, so this portion of lot A used to be part of thirteen R, and lot fourteen R one included all of this area. Is that right?
E- yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
And what's the purpose of this one, just out of curiosity?
To create a new buildable lot.
That, that's correct.
Sure, which would be lot A.
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
It's always hard to see the former lot line, yeah.
Yeah.
That's helpful, uh, having that background information.
Who at this time owns lot A?
Uh, r- r- right, s- s- so a chunk of it is owned by the Hogans and a chunk of it is owned by, by me.
Got it, okay. Hmm. Hmm, okay.
As long as, like Millie keeps saying, that nothing was made non-conforming by doing this.
Right. So, so if you, do Lori, do these meet the criteria for uh, lot?
Yep, so for the, for the conventional, so you can see the uh, minimum requirements right here. So the um, so in the residential A district, you need eighty thousand square feet of area. So they have a hundred and seven thousand square feet of area. And you need uh, two hundred feet of frontage, and they have way more than two hundred feet of frontage.
But I guess I was thinking of now lot thirteen and lot fourteen, because based on our new town bylaws, you can't have these oddly non-con.
You can, you can, you just have to demonstrate. So we still allow the reduced frontage lot.
Okay.
So you need to have at least fifty feet of frontage. And they have sixty-two feet of frontage and change, and this one also has um, so they got fifteen plus, uh, I, I can't remember exactly what the number is, but it's over fifty. So um, the way it works is that if you have a reduced frontage lot, then when you do your lot shape, lot, uh, lot shape factor, you have to be above point two five percent.
And that's what I was.
They calculated it out, and they were at point four one percent uh, for that lot, and the other one.
And.
They were at point thirty-eight percent.
Is that?
So that's okay, so what we want is we want the buildable portion of the reduced frontage lot to be as rectangular as possible.
So I guess my question is, where's that, where, where's that factored? Where's, where's that calculation factored on this plan?
Right here.
I'm sorry, where are you?
Um, you see my mouse, it's the um, Um, you see my mouse, it's the um, you see the title block? It's right next to it.
Lower right of the screen.
Regularity factor, okay, that's what I was looking for, sorry.
Yep.
Okay, and so that's compliant, that's, that's all I was questioning. Great.
Okay. Any more questions by board members?
Another just mostly curiosity question, um, would this change the house numbers? I'm just like kind of noticing how the house numbers are like skipping one between. The two that are being now kind of combined and shifted, um. Does the house numbers stay the same and this would be like two twenty-seven or. Or four, four twenty-seven, or would it be changing it so, you know, the thirteen R would become four twenty-three?
Yeah, that that that's a good question, um, s- s- so initially, we were gonna do the lots where like the new lot was in between us. Cause four twenty-three doesn't exist, uh, there there already is a four twenty-seven. So you can't really go from four twenty-five to four twenty-seven, and because we're on uh, the private road here. Deliveries get messed up all the time, so we don't want to do like a four twenty-five A thing. Um, so I'm not really sure what the the best approach would be.
So Lori, is that something that he would work out with the assessor and Bob, what the best address would be?
The assessor's office assesses the addresses. So, um, you should contact the assessor's office to determine the appropriate address for Lot A. Uh, usually that's kind of around the time when you apply for a building permit.
Oh, all right, uh, yeah, we'll we'll look into that.
Okay. All right, any more questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the A and R's for lots? Four twenty-one and four twenty-five Howard Street?
Still moved.
Roll call vote, Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Carter Brandon?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
And I'm an I, okay, congratulations. We didn't know you're watching, you had to stay for the whole ZBA discussion.
So much fun.
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate it.
Yep, thanks. Um, next on the agenda, other minutes from October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Carter and I had amendments, I don't know if people had time to read them.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with Carter's and. Mine, does anyone have any additional amendments or changes?
No.
Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved?
Second.
As amended, sorry. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Carter Brandon?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
And Amy's an I. Um, the next on the agenda is subcommittee updates. Since it's so late, if anyone has some, maybe we should be quick or talk about them next time.
I'll wait.
I'll wait too. All right, we'll bump those till next meeting. Our next meeting is December second, there is a public hearing for St. Obane.
Oh, good.
And uh, I don't know, is there anything else, Lori?
Nope, just zoning.
Okay.
Um, I will just say, just in case anyone else and we have an issue, um, I might. Not be able to stay too long for the December second meeting, or I might be disappearing and coming back.
Is that something better to do than this, Carter? Come on.
Please, uh, oh, no.
Seeing if I can get out of it or. If I have to get out of this or what it is, but.
Okay. Um, the next ZBA meeting is not till December, NPIC is December.
Actually, the the ZBA uh, has changed. Um, uh, because of the. A closeness to Christmas, um, the chair wants to cancel that meeting, so. We're, we're looking at scheduling a special meeting in January because we do have an applicant. Um, so that could possibly be January thirteenth.
Okay.
Okay. Does anyone have any other additional items to add?
Do we have any update on a special town meeting date or?
Hmm, I have none.
Interesting.
Just jumping in, I also don't have an update on that, so, great question, I have the same question, I. There's, just if I may give a brief update on that, on the question, because I know it affects all of us, um. Uh, my understanding is that the counterparty is still working on diligence. That on which everything is contingent, so. We're sort of waiting to hear from the counterparty as the next step, is what, how I'd say it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I'm hearing no additional questions, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Carter Brandon?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
And I'm an I, good night.